Good evening, everyone. Welcome. It is Wednesday, December 13th, 2023, and I call to order this regular session of the City of Bloomington Common Council. Madam Clerk, if you would, please call the roll.
Councilmember Flaherty?
Here.
Rosenbarger?
Here.
Sims? Sims? Pete Mount Smith?
Here.
Scambaluri?
Here.
Rallo?
Here.
Sandberg?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
And Volin?
Here.
Thank you. And can we check Councilmember Sims' audio to make sure that's working correctly?
Folks on Zoom, we're going to try restarting the meeting. You may need to rejoin. This may correct the audio issue. Just one moment. We can take a two-minute break. We may need to restart.
Thank you, everyone, for your patience. We want to make sure everyone can participate, so we are going to reboot and restart here. Looks like we are back up. And Mr. Lucas, when you have a chance, can you check on Councilmember Sims' audio?
Councilmember Sims, could you give that another try? We're still having issues here, and we'll see if we can get IT on the case.
Let's continue if we can. I'll invite Councilmember Vice President Pete Mount Smith to read our land and labor acknowledgement.
Thank you. We recognize that the City of Bloomington sits on native land. The city, as well as city administrative buildings, are on the traditional homelands of the Miami, Delaware, Potawatomi, and Shawnee people. And we acknowledge they are past, present, and future caretakers of the land. We also acknowledge that much of the economic progress and development in Indiana and in Bloomington resulted from the unpaid labor and forced servitude of people of color, specifically enslaved African labor. We acknowledge that this land remains home to and a site of gathering and healing for many indigenous communities and other people of color, and we commit to the work necessary to create and promote a more equitable and just Bloomington. We move forward, knowing and acknowledging our rich, complicated, and sometimes painful past so that we can learn from it and create a true land of opportunity.
Thank you. We'll now move into Agenda summation. I believe there are changes to the agenda that are being proposed.
Yes, Madam President. And I suggest a motion to amend our agenda this evening. That is, I move to add Councilmember remarks for retiring members at the end of our meeting after council schedule, before adjournment.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Just by way of information for the public, when we have a member participating via Zoom, we take all votes by roll-call vote, so we won't be doing ayes and nays this evening. So with that, Madam Clerk, if you would, please call the roll on the motion to amend
Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Okay. Pete Mount Smith? Scambaluri?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
And Volin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And continuing with our Agenda summation, we'll begin this evening with an approval of minutes for the regular session on March 1st, 2023. We will then continue with reports. Included there are Councilmember reports, reports from the mayor and city offices. I believe we have Mayor Hamilton with us this evening for some brief comments. A report from council committees included there is a report from the Special Committee on Council Processes, a report on board and commission reform, and that will bring us to our first of two periods of public comment. We'll then take up any appointments to boards and commissions, and then move into legislation for second readings and resolutions. In that section, we have ordinance 2331 to amend Title II of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Administration and Personnel regarding amending Chapter 2.23, Community and Family Resources Department, by adding Section 2.23.240, closed captioning in places of public accommodation. Next, we'll have appropriation ordinance 2308 to specially appropriate from the General Fund Economic Development Lit Fund, Parks and Recreation General Fund, the Rental Inspection Program Fund, Local Road and Street Fund, Parking Facilities Fund, Cumulative Capital Development Fund, Vehicle Replacement Fund, Solid Waste Fund, and Fleet Maintenance Fund, expenditures not otherwise appropriated, appropriating various transfers of funds within the General Fund Economic Development Lit Fund, Parks and Recreation General Fund, Local Road and Street Fund, Parking Facilities Fund, Cumulative Capital Development Fund, Solid Waste Fund, Fleet Maintenance Fund, and appropriating additional funds from the Rental Inspection Program Fund and Vehicle Replacement Fund. We'll then take up Resolution 2323, a resolution authorizing the sale of real property regarding 220 East Third Street. We'll come to legislation for first readings. There are none tonight. We'll then come to our second of two periods of public comment. We'll take up matters of council schedule. As you just heard from the amendment to the agenda, we will add an item for Councilmember recognition and comment, and then we will adjourn. So with that, that takes us to approval of minutes.
Madam President. I move the approval of the March 1st, 2023, regular session minutes.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on the motion
Yes. Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Pete Mount Smith?
Yes.
Scambaluri?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
And Sims. No, I'm sorry, we can't.
Councilmember has, it looks to me like he is saying yes. So, okay. In any event, that is approved. Those minutes are approved. Thank you. That takes us to reports, okay, beginning with reports from council members. I'll start on my far left this evening. Councilmember Flaherty?
I'm on your right, but no report this evening. Thank you.
Yes, that way. That way. Councilmember Rosenbarger?
No report. Thank you.
Councilmember Pete Mount Smith?
No report. Thank you.
Councilmember Rallo?
I have a report briefly. I, we will be speaking later, as we know, about council members who are retiring, and this will be my last meeting with, under this current administration. And I just wanted to note that it has been a process over the past eight years of this administration where we haven't always agreed, but there have been some real moves forward as a community. And I want to give credit to Mayor Hamilton for those, for taking on difficult projects, for instance, the sanitation system, which needed to be resolved at the time that he took office. The capital investment in equipment for public safety, which had been in neglect. He recognized that and moved on it and brought us back into essentially a situation where we had the means by which, the equipment by which we could respond to things like home fires and so forth. He presided over the Sustainability Action Plan, Mayor Hamilton, before he was mayor, and I served on the Sustainability Commission. And he took sustainability very seriously, and he worked to have that Sustainability Action Plan, which I think is one of the best in the country, passed. And he worked on things like affordable housing. Now, we could differ with the means by which he found to make things affordable, but he did produce affordable housing for many people in the community, and I want to recognize that. So just to say that we have moved forward as a community. Of course, we have our disagreements, but I respect everybody here and their intentions and their commitment to the betterment of the community. So that's the end of my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sandberg?
Yes, thank you. The Rallo-Sandberg constituent meeting will be held this Saturday, 10:00 Saturday, December 16th. This will be my last and an opportunity for me to express my profound gratitude for the last 17 years and bidding a fond farewell to public service for me, but also to hear from Councilmember Rallo about his vision for the future. So for all of those regular attendees of our Rallo-Sandberg constituent meeting, we hope to see you on Saturday at 10. The link can be found on the council's website, and we hope to see you Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith?
No report.
Thank you. Councilmember Volin?
No report.
Thank you. And I have no report. And Councilmember Sims? I don't know if we have audio yet or not. No, I'm sorry. We've got, we've called for IT to come and work on this, so please be patient with us, and we'll do our best to get that working. So, okay. That takes us to reports from the mayor and city offices. Mayor Hamilton, I believe you wanted to offer a few remarks.
Thank you very much, President Scambaluri. I appreciate the chance for just brief comments tonight. I do want to note first, as been indicated, this being the final council meeting of the year, I directly do want to thank councilmembers Sandberg, Volin, Rallo, sorry, Volin, Sims, Smith, and Scambaluri for your service to this community for these past four years. And for many of you, this devotion to public service has been many more years than that. And on behalf of the whole community, I want to thank you for that service and recognize that. I know there'll be remarks later from you directly, but on behalf of the administration and all the people of the city, thank you very much for your service. And to councilmembers Pete Mount Smith and Rallo and Flaherty and Rosenbarger, congratulations, and we look forward to, I look forward to watching you from a different seat and encourage you to keep taking good care of this community, as I know you will. I'll be cheering you on. I just briefly want to mention a couple things that I know are on the agenda tonight. First, the year-end appropriation ordinance. You'll hear from the Controller's Office about that. I just want to mention the appreciation of your continued support for the important pilot program, Down Payment Assistance Program, that will support 10 police officers and 10 firefighters to live in the city, helping them live in the city, and encourage longevity of service, helping continue our best-in-the-state public safety departments. And second, I know you'll be considering the approval of the sale of the current Police Department Headquarters, as been mentioned on the agenda, on Third Street. I just want to very briefly remind the context of that. We'll be talking more, of course, about that lately, later in the agenda. Two and a half years ago, the June 2021 flood severely damaged key public safety facilities, including the downtown fire station number one on Fourth Street and the Police Department Headquarters on Third Street. Extensive remediation was done at the Police Department Headquarters Fire Station itself. One was deemed unusable, and a temporary station was set up four blocks west. We began to investigate options for the future after that, and that led to several key steps with you. You enacted last year in May the Economic Development Local Income Tax and explicitly provided for $2 million annually to invest in public safety facility expansions for police and fire. After that, we explored numerous options for rehabs and new locations and more for both police and fire facilities. As you know, more than a year ago, in late summer 2022, we shared with the council potential plans to acquire the Showers Building CFC property, and we began months of due diligence on that option, as well as reviewing dozens of alternative approaches or locations for both police and fire facilities. A year ago, in November and December of 2022, we provided with you multiple extensive written materials as briefings, presentations, question-and-answer sessions, sharing the results of that due diligence, including the recommendations to proceed with the purchase of Showers West, as we refer to it, and to rehabilitate Fire Stations One and Three, and to build a new Training Logistics Fire Center on South Walnut. This council voted to approve the sale of ED-Lit-funded bonds to accomplish that plan for four public safety buildings, including the planned sale of the current police headquarters to support the new projects. You also voted to purchase the 64,000-square-foot Showers West building. We know it was not a unanimous decision, and some may continue to oppose that plan, but with that majority vote, we move forward. The 12 months since those votes have been very active. I know you'll hear a bunch more from Deputy Mayor Allen at the time in the agenda, but just for the basics, the bonds were sold, architects were engaged, extensive planning and charrettes held. Construction drawings were created for the two highest priority essential projects, that is fixing Fire Station One downtown and acquiring and rehabbing Showers West for the police headquarters and the fire administration center. Bids have gone out, and numerous companies provided bids back on both of those projects. Construction is underway on the fire station downtown, and contracts are ready to proceed on Showers West. That activity is all ongoing, and that is not directly in front of you tonight. What is in front of you tonight is the sale of the police headquarters as part of that financing plan. The process for that, the Deputy Mayor and others will outline later, just as a basic framework, the sale proceeds will fulfill the full plan for the four projects. We're glad to see that that's feasible, and you'll see that number, the dollars, tonight, which will include Station Three rehab for fire and the new fire facility. If the council approves the sale, which we strongly recommend, we will continue that process, and the next administration will be empowered to close the sale. It will not close this year before year end. It will include in that process dealing with any legal or timing issues, as often happen in closing. I know you're aware of some of those issues. We are confident they can be resolved appropriately. If you do not approve the sale, the next new council and administration will have to pick this up and reconsider the issues and reach their conclusions. While the first two highest priority projects can and will proceed regardless, a delay in approval will directly affect the ability to continue progress on the second set of projects, the Station Three rehabilitation and the Training and Logistics Center. We encourage you to approve the sale and thus allow the negotiations and process to continue in an orderly fashion, consistent with your actions a year ago. I will be around all evening, happy to take questions, try to add any details as I may. And let me close, if I can, at this last council meeting of the year and my last council meeting in this administration. It has been my honor to work with all of you the past four years, others and some of you in the past eight years. I want to congratulate you on helping Bloomington thrive as it is, advancing equity and opportunity, letting us be positioned so well for the future, with a strong economy that is outpacing our peers in Indiana and beyond, with 1,400 units of affordable housing, with the best public safety departments in the state of Indiana, with very strong fiscal strength, outstanding fiscal strength, with national-leading new digital infrastructure happening in front of our eyes, with unprecedented investments in our physical infrastructure, from water systems to sidewalks and trails and transportation networks, to globally recognize just this week climate responses to outstanding basic services and national award-winning parks and arts and other quality-of-life services. I am proud to have served alongside you, proud together to have helped our community reach such heights of excellence. We live in the best of the Midwest, and I thank you for your public service and for the chance to help our community excel. Happy to take questions through the night. I'll be here. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mayor Hamilton. With that, we move to reports from council committees. Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes, thank you. As Chair of the Council's Special Committee on Council Processes, I wanted to share a bit this evening about the report that is attached to this meeting's packet. It's a report on board and commission reform, so I'll share just a bit of context and background, kind of an overview, and then happy to, and next steps, and happy to answer questions as well. So some of this is just verbatim from the report on the first page, but I think for the benefit of the record and the public. So in January 2022, the Novak Consulting Group delivered a report to Mayor John Hamilton, which was prepared based on a scope of work developed by the mayor's administration. While the council and the clerk's office were involved in the development and delivery of that work, we hadn't actually been involved in setting its scope. And so, among other process-oriented needs for the council, last year, I and others made the case that we should really have a committee to look at this and help us move forward with next steps with respect to board and commission reform and other process issues at the city. Early this year, we had another process-related issue referred to us as a committee, which we considered and provided a recommendation to the council on, and that set us back a few months from anticipated and getting into some of the other proactive substantive work we anticipated. In the spring, we set four areas of priority, board and commission reform, updates to Title II, which would include board and commission-related changes, but additional council process changes, improvements to public engagement, and operationalizing equity in our legislative process. And I think these are all synergistic in some way, but the committee decided to prioritize board and commission reform as its first major step in 2023. We had one membership change, and then between May 25th and December 8th, the committee met seven times and dug pretty deeply into the issue of board and commission reform and used the Novak Consulting Group's report as its sort of main guiding framework that we definitely brought in other issues as well. So I'll just kind of highlight those via the executive summary, which, again, we were presenting our recommendations vis-à-vis the organizational assessment and related reforms. We hope that the council will accept this report and implement the committee's proposed reforms in 2024 and beyond. The most significant recommendation we have is to establish a designated position within the office of the city clerk to oversee the city's board and commission system, acknowledging, of course, that much of the work coordinating and implementing the board and commission process is already housed in the clerk's office. We nevertheless felt that Recommendation 10 from the Novak Report was crucial to centralize and better coordinate across multiple branches of government, some of the administration and operation of boards and commissions. So we recommend that the development of a position and its duties be led by the city clerk in consultation with the city council, likely through this committee and through the office of the mayor next year. Implementing the recommendation will likely require either new dedicated funding or other resourcing for the office of the city clerk, and the committee recommends that the clerk incorporate this proposal into the office's 2025 budget. The committee generally supported the organizational assessments, recommendations across categories of training and onboarding, communication and transparency, and strategic focus. We consulted with multiple staff in the mayor's office, as well as city legal and others in the mayoral administration about these recommendations as well. And we believe that most of the recommendations, as they are implemented, should be coordinated and overseen by the new designated position and the office of the city clerk, with the assistance of city council, office of the mayor, the legal department, ITS department, staff liaisons, and their departmental directors. We ultimately did not make a final recommendation on three of the organizational assessments' proposals to either combine or eliminate several boards or commissions. We did discuss these at length, and there is a summary of our discussions included in the report, but we ultimately believe that any proposed implementation of those changes should be led by the incoming mayoral administration and really needs to be done on the city staff side of the equation, but of course, in collaboration with the council and other relevant stakeholders. As far as next steps, we anticipate that the committee will continue its work next year and start advancing, drafting and advancing changes to Title II in line with these recommendations, of course, seeking buy-in and input from our incoming colleagues and the incoming mayoral administration. We also would like to work closely with the clerk's office to support Clerk Bolden in developing the position that the assessment foresaw and that this committee recommends. We, one last thing to mention and highlight here vis-à-vis code changes is that we realize that some of the boards and commissions have shifted in their practices over time, sometimes in ways that aren't directly in line with their initial purview as defined in city code. So we invited all the boards and commissions to assess and look at their body of work in the context of code and recommend to us any changes or updates that might be needed to reflect the work that they've actually been doing. And so communicating with Council Attorney Lucas, I know that some have already gotten back to us. Some have asked for more time. And just speaking from my personal experience sitting on the Commission on Sustainability, it's been a fruitful discussion for them to have and to incorporate some new guidance, for instance, like helping oversee and implement our climate action plan and the adoption of the United Nations Sustainable Development Goals as a part of their organizing framework, which were things that didn't exist when B-COS was created. So just a small example of some of the code changes that we anticipate there as well. I think that's all I'll share here, but again, happy to answer questions if folks have them.
Thank you. Are there questions from council? Yes, Councilmember Rallo?
Yes, thank you. Councilmember Flaherty, I was curious about your recommendation. Actually, it's a, not a final position on the recommendation to merge the Sustainability Environmental Commission. What is, I mean, my point of view is that they should be separate commissions. Is this something that is still open to debate? You feel that they have overlapping duties and purview that should be merged, or what? It's undecided at this point, but I'd like to know what is precisely is undecided.
Sure. Yeah, so we definitely discussed this, including with the chairs, the commissions, and the commissions themselves, acknowledging that in some conceptions of sustainability, environment, social, and economic are sort of the three pillars of sustainability. Environmental is just one of them, and of course, the Environmental Commission's purview has historically been more about environmental quality, sort of a product of the 1970s era of environmental advent and environmental regulation in the U.S., whereas B-COS is more holistic. One could argue has as much in common with the Economic Development Commission as it does with the Environmental Commission. And I will say, I've observed that commission over the last few years shift more and more towards social equity in its frameworks and things like that in the work it's doing. I think the committee was probably least favorable to that recommendation among the three regarding combining commissions. My experience in speaking with commissioners on both commissions is that they're not very favorable either. At the same time, I want to recognize, you know, the considerations raised in the Novak Report, and I think where we kind of arrived at is that... Report, and I think where we kind of arrived at is that it wasn't a heck no on anything. We wanted to leave open the possibility of future discussion about what that would look like and engagement. We think, again, that would really need to have a case that originates from the administration, probably coordinated by the department heads and staff liaisons from planning and transportation and from economic and sustainable development, where those commissions are sort of housed and done in collaboration with the commissioners themselves to better understand, you know, appropriate follow-through. I don't necessarily anticipate that recommendation moving forward. Again, I think it was the one we were least favorable towards among the three related to combining or eliminating commissions, but we didn't ultimately state a position on it.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions? Seeing none, and with the understanding that further discussion is ahead on these recommendations, is there a motion to accept this report on board and commission reform?
So.
It's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk, if you would, please call the roll on the motion to accept. Okay. Councilmember Sims?
Maybe a workaround while IT shows up to work on our audio. Let me see if this works. Go ahead, Councilmember Sims.
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Scambaluri?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Abstain.
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Rosenberg?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, and that passes 801. So with that, we come to our first of two periods of public comment. This is for items not on our legislative agenda this evening, so if you have comments on Ordinance 2331, or on the end-of-year app board, or on the sale of real property, we'll have opportunity for public comment when those items come up on the agenda. So for this first period of public comment, may I have a show of hands in council chambers as to who would like to offer comment? I see one, two. Okay. Mr. Lucas, can you please extend our invitation on Zoom?
I would like to extend the invitation on Zoom. However, I'm not sure we'll be able to hear folks. We're happy to give this a try with the workaround, although we're still having some technical difficulties on our end. So if there is anyone who would like to speak who's joining via Zoom, please raise your hand. We will do our best. If you're able to send your comments in written form through the chat, we would be happy to read those out loud as well. I see one hand raised at the moment.
Thank you. For those in chambers, if you would, please approach the podium. And if you would, please share your name for the record and sign in. And once that's done?
I like five minutes, because, man, time goes by so fast when you're standing here. It really does. But anyway, you know.
And could you share your name for the record, please?
No.
Let the record reflect that in the past, this individual has identified himself as Daryl Rubel. I invite him to correct me if that's not the case. You'll have five minutes.
I think you might have just violated one of my constitutional rights by doing that. I'm gonna look into that, okay? You don't need to be divulging my name when I ask that it not be given. Okay? But anyway, I was watching while I was going TV, you know, watching, I thought, well, I'm gonna come down here. You know, it seems like every time this meeting starts, I don't know what it is, Isville Piedmont Smith brings up this Miami Indian thing. That's history. We all understand. We don't need you to remind us every time that we have a meeting. Let's move on. Quit being so divisive. You're trying to divide people by saying that stuff. Yes, you are. You need to say stuff like, hey, United States Veterans, Bloomington Police, thank you for all the work you do. Instead of being divisive, you bring up that Miami Indian thing. I don't know that whole history thing, but you need to start saying some good stuff. You guys are supposed to be, you know, you're not supposed to be trying to be divide people. And that's what you're, exactly what you're doing. But, you know, I don't ever write a speech or nothing. There are a lot of people get home, boy, they get on the thing, right there, make you trip. I'm just coming from here, man. This is, this is stuff that is dear to me, you know? Like that thing at Allen Street and Rogers. Man, that's gotta go. I've already got 50 signatures of people that want to get that thing out of there, that monstrosity in the road that the police and fire department don't like, because when they drive up through there, they're going to help someone with Narcan. They gotta slow down. I want them to get there fast. That thing needs to be out of there. There's no reason for it to be there. That's the only one on that whole street. You know? Need to worry about some of these other streets that are in horrible shape, like 11th Street, like Monroe to Faribault. That thing's horrendous, man. Put that money on that. You know? But anyway, this is, this is gonna be, you know, this will be the last time we'll see it this year. Be back next year. But, you know, the two things that stand out to me, the most ridiculous things I've heard from city council members this year, was when Mr. Flaherty commented about the people that live over by the police department, complained about the sirens and stuff coming, you know, they didn't like that. What? Really? Move. If you don't like it, that's what people's always told me, my boss, if you don't like your job, find another one. If you don't like where you live, go somewhere else, you know? That was ridiculous. That's number one. That's, you get a gold star for that one. And Mr. Volin about putting homeless camp in, or homeless thing in Rose Hill. Hmm? I do believe he was serious. He may shake his head no, but I believe he was actually serious about that. And also, I'd like to know where my flag went that I put up here in that little thing, and you run right up here after I left, and you run right up here quick to get that. Were you offended by that flag? I know you can't answer. I'm just speaking at you, you know? But I just wondered where that flag is, man. Did you throw it in the trash, or what'd you do with it? But anyway, I do like the idea of turning the podium toward the people. These are the people that are listening to it. You guys ain't listening. You know, we got the Miami Indian thing, the sirens down by the police department that complained about that. Oh, we don't like the noise. That's gotta go. Well, and also, the thing with the police department now, you guys gotta put off, you know, there's this thing in the clause, I guess, I read the paper sometimes and kind of catch stuff, but that little clause they put there that they'd revert back to their ownership if they didn't, if the city tried to sell it some other, to some other, you know? Gotta look into that stuff, man. But anyway, Bloomington Police, they do a great job, man. They get beat up in this town all the time. I want to, I want to make sure they've got lots of money. They need to get, you know, don't defund them, make sure they've got plenty. But, you know, I just want to compliment, and I said this last time I was here, I had a vehicle stolen, Officer Scott Reynolds, Bloomington Police Department. Man, I just got a thing in the mail the other day, the guy's being a warrant for the guy. He's being arrested. Mr. Reynolds, he went a long way to do all that. I mean, you know, he didn't do me no favors. It's just, he cared about what, I was trying to get my vehicle back. And that made me feel good that I was getting, I'm not gonna say revenge, it's justice. It's like when I walk in that building, a fair justice building. I just want some justice. I'll be 64 next month, man. I've only got so much longer to get justice. But that made my day when that come in the mail, that they was gonna arrest the guy that stole my vehicle. And it was all kinds of Officer Reynolds and Officer Sweden and all the other Bloomington Police guys that are down there, they're super duper guys.
Anyone on Zoom?
Jim Shelton, and I believe, I hope we've sorted out our audio issues. We will find out here just momentarily.
Good evening, council. This is Jim Shelton, your test goat, I guess. I see Mr. Volin waving his hand, so maybe you can hear me. Okay, good. Hi, I just wanted to update you and the community about the CASA program. I'm sure you know CASA stands for Court Appointed Special Advocates. These are volunteers who have been trained by the CASA program, have been recruited and trained by the CASA program to work for, advocate for, the children who are in the court system because their parents have abused or neglected them. So typically, the way things work is the problem has been reported, it has been investigated, and children have been removed from the parents and placed either with their relatives maybe or foster parents. And the court has a hearing to decide whether or not these children should officially be taken from their parents and put into the system. The children are, when they have been determined that that is the case, have been referred to as children in need of services or chins. Once that decision has been made, the court will reach out to the CASA program and ask them to assign a volunteer to work with the child or children, often there's more than one child involved, as they work going forward to try to get them into a safe, permanent situation in the future. This year, when the courts have reached out, and that's usually Judge Harvey, they have reached out 394 times with just a couple of weeks to go. And the good news is, the CASA program has been able to provide a volunteer for 352 of those children. The bad news, obviously, is that there are 42 children right now that we do not have a volunteer to assign to assist them. And what they do, they're sort of the eyes and ears of the court. They help DCS monitor how things are going, how the children are doing, are they getting the services they need, is the foster situation safe and working well for them. And then they also monitor how the parents doing. They've been given what is called a disposition order that tells them what they need to do in order to be reunited with their children. So this helps Judge Harvey usually, and it can be one of the other judges if she's got a conflict from past involvement with that family, to decide what's best for the child. So I tell everybody this because we need people to volunteer to help work with those 42 children. We have a training upcoming. It'll run from February 6th to March 7th, and the program is trying a different time schedule in hopes this makes it available to more people to have the training and to therefore serve as volunteers. It's gonna be in the afternoon. Previous trainings have all been in the evening, pretty much. I think we had one in the mornings. But this one's gonna be Tuesdays and Thursdays from 1:00 to 4:00. So I invite people to look into this. You can go to MonroeCountyCASA.org, click on the volunteer link, drop-down menu, you'll see, and you can click on several things. One is the frequently asked question page that'll help you learn a lot more of the details that might help you decide if this is a good volunteer opportunity for you or not. I argue that it is a very good opportunity. I've been doing it now for 11 years. It can be hard, but it also can be very satisfying. The goal is to get the children into a safe, permanent situation, back with their parents, if their parents can get things organized and get their acts together. And every case I've had in these 11 years, except one, has been involved with drug addiction, and that one was involved with alcohol addiction. So there is really hard work the parents have to do in order to be able to get reunited with their children. But it's very, very, very happy when the children are either reunited with their parents because they have gotten their act together, or perhaps have been adopted or moved in some other safe, permanent situation. So if you got any more information you need, you can go to that website. And by the way, on that website, you can fill out the application to enter the training. That application will be due January 24th, so it's not that long after the holidays are over. Or you can call 333-2272 and talk to a staff member and get any questions you might have answered. So thank you very much for the opportunity to share that with the community.
Thank you, Mr. Shelton. And let's come here in chambers. Welcome? Yes. If you would, please share your name for the record, sign in.
Hello. My wife and I live on East Wimbledon Lane.
And don't forget to sign in.
I'm sorry?
Don't forget to sign in, please.
Sign in?
Yes.
Ah, thank you very much. If I did this more, I'd know this, of course. I want to very briefly.
Begin, you'll have five minutes.
Yes, I know. Thank you. I really don't think I'll go that long. Happy holidays to each of you. I want to speak briefly about the Committee on Council Processes report and some of the materials that were contained in the materials for tonight's meeting. I've been interested, as some of you know, in the Novak Report, and my concern about some of the limitations of the report itself, its starting points, I mean, quite too narrow and limited and not really all it could be. That said, however, there are some good things in the report, of course, no baby with bathwater thing. Congratulations to the committee for its work that it's done and the work that goes forward. It's impressive. I wanted to say just a couple of things, though, about, if I had more time, I would have done this more organized, but this is a busy time of year, so I'll just make a couple of quick comments off the materials, starting perhaps with the, excuse me for this, the anti-report form that was suggested in the materials. You know, among the things the anti-report form, it's built around activities and plans, not a bad thing, with an optional category. Well, some of what, and this will have something to do with my later comments within the two or three minutes, about design of these meetings, best process, facilitation, and so forth. I think there could be another category here, not an optional way you can put everything else that comes to mind, but asking boards and commissioners about what works about the processes, the skills, what worked about the onboarding, the preparation, what's missing, what's needed. I think rather than just an optional category, if I'm understanding the materials, which again, I looked at for like 20 minutes earlier this evening, I think there's a missing category if this is suggested as a kind of reporting form going forward, if, as I'm understanding this. Next, and almost lastly, I promise, I'm looking here on page, from the materials, on page 32, which has due, it says Committee on Council Processes, scope of work, look to oversight roles for this work. I hope I'm in the right category here. I think there's still some limitations here of what's being looked at, what's being asked for. I felt that the whole initial Novak Report was too efficiency-oriented and not really about what's good democratic governance and what does resident engagement and community membership mean for it. I think that's not reflected still in what you're looking for going forward. I note you mention in, under city administration, you mentioned the public engagement director position. Having met with everyone who's been in that role once each, and having studied the job description somewhat, no, it's remarkably interesting job description, never quite perhaps lived up in practice to what's in the job description. I'm hoping this might improve. But this relates directly to some of what this boards and commissions work is really intended to be. So I hope this will continue to be looked at along with everything else that's being recommended about that position. Just about finally, I think the point where it says under 2.0, under oversight, under onboarding process resources, there's no shift of ongoing support, not in and out, but what's happened, what's, who's paying attention to this going forward? What are we learning? What's needed in these, on these boards and commissions for facilitation skills, for meeting design, for inclusion going forward, and what's being shared among the boards and commissions? This is also relates, by the way, to the comprehensive plan. And you might even ask boards and commissions how they're relating to the goals and the policies laid out in the present comprehensive plan, which, for instance, says promote staff public engagement knowledge and competencies, and support city departments to assess and document their public engagement experiences, and to share learning across departments. I'm not gonna read them all. But there's a lot here to work from if this work is integrated, one to another. I think, lastly, and that's all, under the, I don't know what the section is called, sorry, this whole section of, I think it's all under 2.0, maybe 3.0, where the DEI-focused material sits in this, thinking about how we prepare and train people, not just to understand, and I'm exaggerating for effect, what makes it safe for the city to have boards and commissions, which has a little bit of a vibe to that, but what makes these effective and inclusive? I think there could be more done in that area, thinking about onboarding, preparation, training to inclusion, around membership, sustaining membership, and to make these boards and commissions other vehicles for voice in the governance of our city. And thank you.
Comments, Mr. Anzler. Mr. Lucas, do we have anyone else on Zoom or any comments written into chat?
Not that I see, no.
Okay. And are there any other comments in here in chambers? Seeing none, that'll close our first of two periods of public comment and take us to appointments to boards appointments to boards and commissions. Are there any appointments this evening? Seeing none, let's move to legislation for second readings and resolutions.
Madam President, I move that ordinance 2331 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk, will you please call the role on the motion to introduce?
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Scambalori?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Rosenbarker?
Yes.
And Sims.
Yes.
Yay.
Can you see me?
And we can hear you.
I can't see.
And we can hear you.
I can't see myself.
And we can hear you too, which is great, so thank you.
But I can't see my own square or anything. That's all right. Proceed. We're working on it.
Okay.
Good to see you, ma'am.
We'll get there. But Madam Clerk, if you would, please read.
Ordinance 2331, to amend Title II of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Administration and Personnel.
Thank you.
Regarding amending Chapter 2.23, Community and Family Resources Department, by adding Section 2.23.240, closed captioning in places of public accommodation. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance is sponsored by Councilmember Volin and makes amendments to Title II of the Bloomington Municipal Code to add a new section, 2.23.240, entitled Closed Captioning in Places of Public Accommodation. That would require places of public accommodation to activate closed captioning on closed captioning television receivers.
Thank you. And Councilmember Volin, over to you.
I have a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Do we need a motion to accept?
Yes.
Sorry, my fault.
Mine too. Madam President, I move that we, that ordinance 2331 be adopted.
Second. Thank you. Now, Councilmember Volin, please.
Thank you. I'm going to take less than five minutes to give an overview of this ordinance. There are others here in support of it, some of whom you'll hear from at some point this evening. Let me start by correcting any perception about the numbering of the ordinance. In development, it was ordinance 2333, but was renumbered to 2331 before it was disseminated. Some people who've been speaking in support of it might have been confused by the renumbering. So let me present ordinance 2331. It adds Section 2.23.240 to City Code to require that any establishments that display television programming in their places of business for the benefit of customers, clients, or patients should have closed captioning active on those TVs whenever they're open to the public. Any place that provides TV programming as a service to their patrons, their patients, their clients, should be turning on the closed captioning feature as a matter of course, whether it's a bar or a restaurant with TVs showing sporting events, news channels, entertainment programming, places with televisions in their lobbies, their sales floors or their waiting rooms also count as what we in City Code call public accommodations. Big box stores with televisions for sale, banks, hotels, entertainment centers like cinemas, bowling alleys or pool halls, hospitals, medical offices, and barber or beauty shops, among others. The ordinance would require those places of public accommodation with TVs to turn on captioning during their operating hours, whether they be normal business hours from 9 to 5 weekdays, whenever waiting rooms or sales floors are open to the public, or if they're open 24 hours a day to the public in the case of some medical facilities. Captioning would not need to be on before or after hours if only employees are present. Enforcement of this ordinance would be handled in the same way as any potential human rights violation in response to a complaint and addressed through the city's adjudication process for such complaints. The original draft of the ordinance contemplated a two-year phase-in and education period for local establishments, but the Indiana Association for the Deaf and the city's Council for Community Accessibility both recommended a start date of January 1, 2025, which I now also endorse. The ordinance before you has been endorsed by the Council for Community Accessibility and the Bloomington Monroe County Human Rights Commission. I've been working with Holly Elkins, who is here tonight, the legislative chair for the Indiana Association for the Deaf, who lives in Bloomington, and Michael Schermus, the city's human rights coordinator, both of whom are here tonight. And I've worked with others to try to get the fine points right. Is Ms. Elkins going to step out for a while? Because this is the point where I was going to ask her to present. Okay, well, I'll fill time while I can with my closing remarks. While captioning may seem to the casual observer like a requirement too trivial to be deserving of an ordinance, it's significant to those with hearing loss. It removes a barrier. It relieves an obligation to request accommodation to be treated equally in public. And it relieves the indignity of having to reveal, explain, or justify the need for accommodation. And it serves everyone who is temporarily unable to hear televisions in crowded and noisy public environments. Among other people who have come out in support of it, it's supported by Bida Dewise, the CEO of Stone Belt Arc here in Bloomington. It's supported by the Indianapolis and Michiana Chapters of the Hearing Loss Association of America. It's supported by the Indiana Chapter of the Registry of Interpreters for the Deaf, and is supported by the Autism Society of Indiana, who say that individuals on the autism spectrum have difficulties with communication skills. The proposed closed captioning city ordinance will allow these individuals a different way to receive information and communication in a different capacity, meeting individual needs, as an illustration of the diverse audiences that this would serve. Across the board, it's a good idea. It's easy to implement. It's of service to all. It's a step towards inclusivity and better accommodation of everyone in our society. So with that, I'd like to introduce Holly Elkins, who wanted to make a presentation. If she would come up and address the council, I think we'd appreciate it.
Good evening, councilmen and councilwomen. I want to thank you for this opportunity to talk to you tonight about the importance of public TV captioning. I am here representing the Indiana Association of the Deaf, and I thought that I would share some of my own personal experiences as a deaf person. I am one of 500,000 residents of Indiana who have hearing loss. My journey started here in Bloomington. I'm the sole deaf person in my hearing family. I went to Gallaudet University in Washington, DC. I was a student there. And while I was there, my peers taught me the importance of identifying myself as a deaf person, and I turned my deafness into a positive trait. During my time at Gallaudet University, the Americans with Disabilities Act, the ADA, was passed in 1990, and that was a paramount legislation for disabled people throughout the country. One of the positive aspects of the ADA was that they required captioning on TVs, they required a chip to be placed in any TV that was 13 inches or larger. They had to enable closed captions so that sports, news, programming could all be accessible by deaf people. Now, while this was the intention of the ADA, it was very admirable, however, it was a mixed bag because people with disabilities still experience barriers every day in our daily lives. One example of that is I had a family member in the hospital, and they were nearing death. As I sat in that hospital room, there were no TV captions. Imagine if I was the patient in that room. I would not be able to follow or understand any of the programming, watch my favorite shows, Jeopardy, for example. If it was me, that would just drive me up the walls, not being able to have that programming, not having access to that. And so, you know, we are talking about deaf and hard-of-hearing people, that it not only affects us, but it impacts different groups of people. For example, people who go to a restaurant, their local restaurant, and maybe it's so loud in the restaurant with everybody talking that they don't understand what's on the TV screen. And I'm sure that many of you have experienced this, right? You would like to see captions on the screen so you could understand what the programming is saying. Evidence is growing that there is an increased demand for subtitles and closed captions, and it's all documented by research. Recently, in 2022, Y-Pulse did a study with a TV and entertainment report, and they showed that those who are aged 15 to 39 prefer watching TV programs and movies with English subtitles. 59% of Generation Z prefers having English subtitles and captions on their programming. 52% of millennials have said they prefer watching TV with subtitles and captions. The same study also showed that globally, foreign movies and such, 76% of Generation Z and millennials prefer watching foreign content with English subtitles. Another company did research. It's called Three Media Play. And they did research on American viewing preferences in regard to captions. They did a survey, and they found that 25% of the people said that they had hearing loss. The rest all said that they preferred the captions and they had no hearing loss. Social media is very prevalent nowadays, and TikTok has now established subtitles as a common feature. So here we have public TV captioning well behind social media, and we'd like to see the same compliance. TikTok is very inclusive, intentionally, whereas public accommodations of TV programming with captions really needs to catch up. Here in Bloomington, people like myself or other residents or visitors that come to Bloomington, they may have intellectual disabilities, they may be veterans, they may be senior citizens, they may be learning English as a second language. There's many groups who would benefit to having that equal access to the information that hearing people are getting, whether they're in a hospital, whether they're in a medical situation at their doctor's office. For example, tonight, here we see captioning. This is a really good example. It really helps us to understand when we can't hear as well. It's simply good customer service, community service. For example, here in Bloomington, you know, we have our sidewalk project. You know, we're seeing curb cuts, we're seeing more accessibility. And now, it doesn't only benefit wheelchair users, it benefits those on bike, it benefits senior citizens, it benefits young people, strollers, et cetera. Everyone is benefiting from it. So those are examples of what we call universal accessibility. That means everybody benefits, not just a particular group. In conclusion, please support the captioning ordinance without delay. It does not cost businesses any funds, it does not require any special equipment or accommodations. For example, the ramps, you know, that is a financial cost, whereas this, there is none. It's not complicated. All they have to do is activate the closed captioning on their TV screens. So before I finish this night, I would like to acknowledge and appreciate Councilman Volin for his bringing this ordinance to your attention. Thanks for all of your action on this ordinance, and thank you for listening to me tonight. Do you have any questions for me? I would be happy to answer them. Yes? Congressman Volin?
No, I'm going to wrap up and then call for questions. So please stick around. I just wanted to say, listening to Ms. Elkins now, I realize the benefits that I've experienced just personally. I was in the hospital for a week 10 years ago, unable to eat or sleep, and the only thing that got me through was all-night-long marathons of Law &amp; Order. And if I could not have even enjoyed those because I couldn't do anything else, if I couldn't have understood them, I don't know what I would have done. I know that as somebody who actively speaks Greek, I learn the language better when I can read the captions of Greek-language programming that I'm watching. And I have benefited from being able to read a screen in a loud environment where it's impossible to talk otherwise, where you could never hear the programming. So even if it didn't benefit me at all, this is a good, simple idea across the board. Again, it's easy to implement, it's of service to everyone, it's a step towards inclusivity and better accommodation of everyone in our society. So thank you for your attention. With that, I'd like to invite questions. I also want to note that Michael Schermus is here, our human rights coordinator, and he'd be available to answer questions if he would like. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Councilmember Volin. Thank you, Ms. Elkins. Are there questions from council? Councilmember Piedmont Smith, and then Councilmember Rallo.
Yes. My question is about getting the word out. If this ordinance passes, how will businesses and all the entities included in the term public accommodations, how will they be notified and informed how they can comply with the ordinance?
Well, this ordinance does not specify a plan. That is something for the administration to carry out. I understand. I mean, I've talked with Mr. Schermus about this, but I don't know that we have a specific plan for doing it. I think, do you, can you add to this, Mr. Schermus? Because I don't know what I would say.
Yeah. Hi, I'm Michael Schermus, Community and Family Resources Department, and I'm the staff liaison for the Council for Community Accessibility and the Human Rights Director for the Bloomington Monroe County Human Rights Commission. Yeah, well, there are plenty of ways that we're going to try to get the word out about it. One would be, of course, our newsletter, Facebook posts, and obviously a press release so the general public can know about it. We are in discussion, want to see the ordinance get passed first, to potentially have a decal that may go on the door, real simple, straightforward kind of thing that would say closed captioning available here kind of thing, mostly in a graphic way kind of thing. And that may be something that we pass out to businesses that are, you know, and restaurants that are doing that. So that's a possibility. So that's some of the ways.
I will also note that Christopher MG from the chamber and I attended a meeting in August with members of the city government in Seattle, who told us about their closed captioning ordinance. And they had similar plans for getting the word out. So whether it's a decal or just sort of, I mean, there will also be the, I don't know that, at least for the first year, there will be any kind of complaints that Mr. Schermus might field would be just a notice that would not have any penalty. If I recall correctly, penalties for violations are similar to the noise ordinance.
Yeah. So the enforcement would be the same kind of way that we-
Well, the enforcement would be the same kind of way that we currently deal with any kind of issue that comes in on disability. So if somebody comes to me with, "This restaurant has, it lacks accessibility for this," or "This apartment building is not doing this," whatever the issue may be, I will frequently try to get more information and potentially will go out and investigate it by taking a look at it. So this would probably be the kind of thing where if somebody reported that there was a bar, restaurant, that didn't have closed captioning on, I'd probably just drop by and tell them, "Just want to educate you about the ordinance on closed captions," and would ask that you would turn that on because there's been a complaint. If they refuse to do something like that, then I would probably ask the person that had put the complaint in to file a formal complaint, just like we do with any form of discrimination, and then we would formally investigate it and, you know, talk to witnesses, et cetera, and then make a finding on that, just like we do with any form of discrimination.
Thank you. Congressman Rallo?
Well, I have a related question. I was interested in the enforcement provision, and so an individual may allege violation filing a complaint with the Bloomington Monroe County Human Rights Commission, and then the Human Rights Commission should have the authority to investigate complaints and issue appropriate orders pursuant to Bloomington Municipal Code. So there are no monetary penalties. Is that my understanding, or are there?
No, they're not. We would have an issue with that as the Human Rights Commission in their discussion because that's not the purpose of the commission, to levy fines. It was to investigate discriminations. That's what the ordinance says, that's what we do. That would bring a whole nother level that we weren't even willing to go there and saw no reason to make it into something that it's not. When we had discussions with Holly Elkins and Councilmember Volin and somebody from the business community, with the Seattle people, one of the big first concerns was, "Well, how many complaints are you getting so that we have some idea?" Because, you know, if you're getting a lot of complaints, this would be a ton more work. And they're like, "Oh, yeah, you know, just a couple." And I was like, "Oh, so this is not a big deal. And why make it a big deal by trying to create this fine structure and on all that when we didn't need it?" And that's what we decided on.
Just to say that this was something that we had talked about with the Chamber, and while they were a little concerned about the burden it might place, the remedy is so elementary. Again, as you heard Ms. Elkins say, the ADA-required chips to be built into TV sets for this purpose. So it's all I have to do is turn them on.
I get that. So you anticipated my next question, if I might, just to follow up, and that is, how many complaints would happen and whether you're equipped as a commission to deal with it? Sounds like you are. Sounds like you don't need any staff member from city departments to assist. Is that your, that's your conclusion from, I guess, having discussions with other places where this is deployed? Is that correct?
Yeah. I'm always hopeful that there will be less discrimination complaints than there ever are, and I hope there are none with this and that people just do it. You never know, right? I mean, I feel like we're able to deal with it as well as we're able to deal with any of the other issues that we do. That's what you're asking, or?
Yes, I think that covers it.
One quick question, Councilmember Volin? Or did you want to follow up?
Well, I was going to say that in the drafting of the ordinance, we realized that we might have been reinventing the wheel, and then we discovered that, well, we can just use the human rights language already built into City Code, and we don't have to repeat it by describing all the different venues, for example, that have to be accommodated. It's any place of public accommodation that was already in code. So we did our best to simplify and simplify and to make it very, very basic.
And I will say that we, that the Human Rights Commission and the Council for Community Accessibility had discussion, asked questions, brought forth their concerns, and the group that was working on it addressed those concerns to our satisfaction, which is why those, both the council and the, for Community Accessibility and the Human Rights Commission, decided to, you know, support, recommend passage of the ordinance, so.
Well, I certainly appreciate this effort and all the work you've done to address these deficiencies. I was just texted by a constituent who said that Katz does not have closed captioning of our meeting this evening. And I've, and in the past, we've had someone signing for those who are hearing impaired, but somehow that has been dropped. I think we need to focus on our own meeting in terms of accessibility as well.
Well, although we do not need to. Normally, our captioning is on since we've gone hybrid meetings, even when all members of council are here. It is now, it has been our default, as I think all of us will have noticed, for at least, I mean, we've been back meeting in chambers since March 2022, and like many other people, we've gone permanently hybrid. That has had the added benefit of providing captioning on all our screens, which are on all the time during our meetings. So it's proven to be an acceptable solution. We, I don't know, I mean, that's, I'm a little disappointed to realize that Katz itself does not have closed captioning on, but I would think that they should be able to, people should be able to turn it on at home. It's not automatic, but if you have control over your own TV set, that's up to you to turn it on.
Thank you. Additional questions? Seeing none, let's move to public comment then. For anyone in chambers who would like to offer a comment on Ordinance 2331, if you would, please approach the podium. Mr. Lucas, can you extend our invitation on Zoom, please?
Yes. If any members of the public on Zoom would like to speak to this item, please raise your hand. You can find the raise hand feature in your control bar by clicking the reactions tab or the more tab. If you can't locate that, please send a chat to the meeting host to let us know you'd like to speak.
Mr. Lucas, if there is anyone on Zoom who is speaking in American Sign Language, could we enable their video to let their comments be made in that way?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And are there any, is there anyone wishing to offer comments here in chambers? I'm not seeing anyone. And Mr. Lucas, do we have anyone on Zoom?
We do have Dan Domsick.
Good evening, everyone. Just a quick check, am I coming through okay?
Yes, you are. Please confirm your name for the record, and then you'll have three minutes.
Of course. Thank you. My name for the record is Dan Domsick. I am a staff member with AARP Indiana. Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you to the City of Bloomington, Common Council Members, and Mayor Hamilton. I can go ahead and put this public comment in the chat as well, just in case there's technical difficulties. But I'd like to thank you all so much for your time and the opportunity to comment on Ordinance 2331. Of course, I, again, am a staff member with AARP Indiana, the office of the nationwide organization that aims to empower Hoosiers to choose how they live as they age. We are glad to support this ordinance on behalf of AARP Indiana's approximately 12,000 members in the City of Bloomington. Hearing loss affects more than 30 million Americans. We voice our support for this legislation alongside other community partners to express the importance of identifying the needs, concerns, and barriers faced by individuals who experience hearing impairment or complete hearing loss. Ordinance 2331 promotes the health and inclusion of all individuals and their families and allows everyone to be engaged. This is an easy accommodation to comply with that yields a great reward for so many. Nearly 50 people have signed an online AARP petition in support of this ordinance. If the council adopts Ordinance 2331, it will mean that every person in a public space will be able to receive crucial information like severe weather warnings via screens. It also means everyone, despite complete hearing loss or impairment, will be able to fully enjoy the fun stuff like basketball games, too. Thank you again for hearing AARP Indiana's views on this proposal. We respectfully ask for you to support Ordinance 2331. Thank you again.
Thank you. Is there anyone additional, are there any additional commenters on Zoom?
I see, no.
And I'm not seeing any here in chambers? In which case, let's come back to council for additional questions. Councilmember Volin?
I actually wanted to direct a question to Ms. Elkins that I've received in recent days. It's a very small thing, but she might have some response. So there's a concern about, for example, the act of watching football, and that caption can sometimes get in the way of scores or the like. But one person I know asked about, "Well, what if the sound is off? Would captions need to be on if nobody else in the bar is actually listening, they're just watching?" What is the IAD's thought on that small condition?
Well, I think that's a good question. We all love football here in America. The technology is improving. The NFL games, the graphics are improving. They already are putting the captions, like the score will be on the side or the, so that the captions are not covering up the scores or, you know, above the scores. So it's not ideal yet, but it is improving. Those of us in the deaf community understand that, you know, football, sometimes you don't really need captioning because you're watching the action and you see the score. You don't always need to see the commentary, but it is personal preference, certainly. I hope that answers your question. TV technology is improving all the time with feedback from the community so that the captions are not covering up the graphics.
Thank you. That answers that question. I will also sort of answer my own question by saying that we did have an issue about, a question of, "Well, what about when there's a bar or a location with many TV sets on? Do all of them have to have captioning on?" And for that, we took the recommendation of the IAD where they said that they recommend that typically one TV in every five tuned to the same channel should have captions on. So if you have five TVs, one of them will have captions. If you have six or more, two. If you have 10 or more, three, and so on. So I think those two ideas sort of address any concern that patrons might have about watching sports events in bars. Thank you for that answer.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Elkins. Additional questions? Seeing none, is there any final comment on Ordinance 2331? Councilmember Piedmont Smith and Councilmember Flaherty.
Yes, I'd just like to thank Councilmember Volin for bringing this forward, and thank you to Ms. Elkin for being here and presenting this legislation and the impact it can have. I am very much in favor of the ordinance. I would just emphasize that we need to get the word out. It is a simple thing for managers of restaurants or other public accommodations to put the closed captioning on, but they need to know, you know? So I may be using the Chamber of Commerce as a way of communicating with all businesses, IU Health, or any other medical, regional medical association, restaurant association. Social media is probably a good way to get the attention of bar owners who often use that a lot with the student population. Just some effort to get the word out would be greatly appreciated, but I'm excited about this. I think this will be helpful for everybody, just like Ms. Elkin said, it's not just for people who have hearing loss, it's going to be beneficial for everybody who wants to know what's going on. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Volin. I wanted to just acknowledge that in this, your final meeting as a council member, that you've been a champion for accessibility on this council, and I appreciate and value that. Wanted to thank Ms. Elkins as well for the presentation. I count myself as one of the 52% of millennials that often prefers to have captions on the things I'm viewing, and appreciate the support of staff and others in the community in developing this ordinance as well as its ongoing implementation. So thank you very much. I'm happy to support it tonight.
Thank you. Additional comments? Seeing none, Madam Clerk? Oh, I'm sorry.
I did want to close it out. Thank you. I just want to thank Ms. Elkins for being so supportive and for recommending it, and awful lot of great recommendations that went into the ordinance. I certainly did not do this alone. Mr. Schermus was of great help, and all the input that we got over the past several months to make this accommodation. If there's only one regret I have, it's, many of you know that I have had a lot to say about the podium where we have people speak, and I fought to get the timer installed there, and I was pleased to do so, and then I see Ms. Elkins present, and I see that the microphone and the timer are just in the way of us being able to see her clearly. And so I would just say that the future council should keep that in mind when redesigning the place where people get up to address the council. I hope that they will take up that torch after I go. With that, I recommend, I would ask you for your positive vote and support on Ordinance 2331. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilmember Sims? Did you have a hand up?
I did. Thank you. Didn't know you all saw me there.
I was late.
I also too, thank you. I too would like to thank Councilmember Volin and Ms. Elkin, and also Michael Schermus for the work there. And I think, like myself, when many of us are out in public, many of our businesses in public locations are already complying with the results of this ordinance. And I think Councilmember Piedmont Smith's effort or support of enhancing the education and getting the word out is precisely exactly what we need. And what we're doing tonight in codifying this ordinance is to enlarge the area of enforcement that already is not complying currently. So I'm very happy to support this and another step for accessibility, I think, which we all support. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any additional comment? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on Ordinance 2331? Sure. Councilmember Scambaluri?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Yes.
Volin?
What is the sign? What is the sign for yes?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
And Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
And that passes 9-0. Thank you, everyone.
I'll move that appropriation ordinance 2308 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Will the clerk please call the roll on the motion to introduce? Mr. Rallo?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
And Scambaluri?
Yes. That passes 9-0. Will the clerk please read?
Appropriation ordinance 2308 to specially appropriate from the General Fund, Economic Development Lit Fund, Parks and Recreation General Fund, the Rental Inspection Program Fund, Local Road and Street Fund, Parking Facilities Fund, Cumulative Capital Development Fund, Vehicle Replacement Fund, Solid Waste Fund, and Fleet Maintenance Fund expenditures not otherwise appropriated, appropriating various transfers of funds within the General Fund, Economic Development Lit Fund, Parks and Recreation General Fund, Local Road and Street Fund, Parking Facilities Fund, Cumulative Capital Development Fund, Solid Waste Fund, Fleet Maintenance Fund, and appropriating additional funds from the Rental Inspection Program Fund and Vehicle Replacement Fund. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance appropriates various transfers of funds within the General Fund, Economic Development Lit Fund, Parks and Recreation General Fund, Local Road and Street Fund, Parking Facilities Fund, Solid Waste Fund, Cumulative Capital Development Fund, Solid Waste Fund, and the Fleet Maintenance Fund. It also appropriates additional funds from the General Fund, Rental Inspection Fund, and Vehicle Replacement Fund.
Thank you.
I'll move that appropriation ordinance 2308 be adopted.
Second.
Second.
Thank you very much. And who do we have from the administration presenting? Welcome.
Good evening. Cheryl Gillan, Director of Auditing and Financial Systems, Controller's Office. So, thank you for having me this evening. And I'd like to just have this presentation serve as the public meeting, as required, for additional appropriations, which was advertised in the paper 10 days prior to this meeting. I will provide a short version of the additional appropriations memo, which was dated November 30th, and I'll be happy to answer any questions at the end. So appropriation ordinance 2308 is our comprehensive 2023 year-end appropriation. The overall 2023 additional appropriation request is $460,000, which covers 10 funds. Two of the funds are requesting additional appropriations while the remaining eight are requesting transfers. For the General Fund, all additional fund requests will be covered as transfers between departments and categories. This will allow coverage to the requested changes between the initial budget prepared and the actual operating expenses for 2023. The net effect on the actual appropriation from the General Fund is zero. Hence, there will be no impact on the fund balance or tax rates. For Animal Care and Control, which is the Public Works Department, they are requesting an additional appropriation of $188,840. Of that, $13,840 would go to Category 3. The remaining $95,000 would go to Category 4, which is capital, to cover the Monroe County Humane Society lease buyout. And please note that the funds will come from the kind of subcategory of 5,000 and above donations. For the Public Works Administration Department, there's a request to transfer $30,000 from Category 4 capital to Category 3 services, an additional appropriation of $525,000 to cover Category 2 supplies and Category 3 services, shortfalls. Funds will cover winter clothing allowance in Category 2 and the projected 2023 municipal elections cost in Category 3. Clerk Department is requesting a transfer of $10,000 from Category 1 Personnel Services to Category 2 and 3. $2,000 will go to Category 2 Supplies and $8,000 will go to Category 3 Services. The transfer will cover the purchases of headphones, tablets in Category 2, and unbudgeted education programming fees and travel related to education in Category 3. Under Economic and Sustainability Development Department, they are requesting a transfer of $58,000 from Category 1 Personnel Services to Category 3 Services. In addition, the department is requesting an additional appropriation of $60,690 for Category 3 Services to cover the unbudgeted parking corral costs. Overall, this equates to an additional appropriation request of $2,690 for EDS, for ESD, sorry. Council is requesting the transfer of $2,500 from Category 3 Services to Category 1 Personnel Services. This request allows the department to cover higher than anticipated personnel expenditures. The Controllers Department is requesting the release of $80,955 from Category 3. The savings is the result of lower than anticipated dues, subscriptions, postage, and project management expenditures. The Engineering Department is requesting a transfer of $30,000 from Category 1 Personnel Services to Categories 2 and 3. The request is to be split evenly between the two categories. The transfers will cover new employee supplies in Category 2 and modification of workstations in Category 3. The Fire Department is requesting a transfer of $70,000 from Category 3 to Category 1, which will cover the costs associated with hiring bonuses, corrections to overtime payments due to bonuses for all shift firefighters, and the issuance of Kelly Day buyback payments. In addition, the department is requesting the release of $14,000 in Category 2 and $95,000 in Category 3. The savings does come from the showers west purchase, which allow the department to repurpose furniture and reduce maintenance expenditures when workstations were updated. CFRD is requesting the release of $30,000 from Category 1 Personnel Services, and the savings from that category is from staffing shift throughout 2023. For legal, a $20,000 transfer from Category 1 Personnel Services to Category 3 is being requested to cover excess outside special legal services due primarily to annexation litigation, extensive consulting by department heads with ARPA counsel, and the departure of two attorneys. An overall additional appropriation request in the amount of $70,000 is being requested to fully cover Category 3 Services shortfall. The Office of the Mayor requests a $12,460 transfer from Category 2 to Category 1 to help cover employee turnover expenditures throughout 2022, 2023, sorry. And to fully cover Category 1 shortfall, the department is requesting an increase of $21,590 in Category 1. Plus, an increase of $6,890 to Category 3 Services is being requested to cover higher than anticipated dues and subscriptions. The overall additional appropriation request is $28,480. The Human Resources Department is requesting the transfer of $459,000 from Category 1 Personnel Services to Category 3. The department also requests an additional appropriation of $465,931 in Category 3. The transfer and the additional appropriation request will fully cover the fire and police housing program. The Category 1 savings comes from pushing the longevity program into 2024 and the park cash-out program. The Planning Department is requesting the release of $149,406 from three different categories. $43,906 will come from Category 1. $5,000 will come from Category 2. And $100,500 will come from Category 3. The Police Department is requesting the release of $810,000 from Category 1 Personnel Services, which is due from unfilled officer positions. The department is also requesting a transfer of $60,000 from Category 1 to Category 3 to cover higher-than-budgeted electricity, data connectivity, vehicle labor, and insurance claims. HAND requests an additional appropriation of $58,420 in Category 1 to cover personnel turnover throughout 2023. Public Works, the Facility Maintenance Department, is requesting a transfer of $45,000 from Category 4 capital to Category 3. The savings will come from deferring a pickup truck purchase, and the Category 3 increase will cover higher-than-anticipated City Hall electricity charges in 2023. Again, the General Fund has an adequate overall balance within various departments to cover the additional appropriation requests. There's no fiscal impact due to these requests. Now, I'll cover the other funds. That would be nine funds. With two of those funds requesting additional appropriations and appropriations and the remaining funds are requesting transfers only. The Economic Development Lit Fund identified under Human Resources is requesting $180,000 transfer of funds from Category 1 Personnel Services to Categories 2 and 3. Of that, $20,000 would go to Category 2 and $160,000 would go to Category 3. The transfers will cover the costs of office furniture, docking stations, monitors, desks and chairs for additional temporary staff members in Category 2. And NeoGov recruitment videos, New World API memberships and fees would be supported under Category 3. Parks and Recreation General Fund is requesting a $50,000 transfer from Category 3 to Category 4. This would allow them to purchase a new greens mower and an emergency replacement of a blower. The Rental Inspection Program is under HAND. An additional appropriation of $280,000 is being requested. As of September 30th, approximately $280,000 had been collected for the last year. The revenue in this, the revenue is accounted in this fund. The expenses for the program are still appropriated under the General Fund. As such, an invoice will be created to reimburse the General Fund from the Rental Inspection Program Fund. There's no fiscal impact to this fund as this is simply a transfer of revenues collected and funding the expenses in the program for which they're budgeted and paid. The Local Road and Street Fund, which is under Public Works' Street Division, is requesting a transfer of $20,000 from Category 3 to Category 2, which would cover the cost of traffic signal detection equipment repairs. The Parking Facilities Fund, which is under Public Works' Parking Services Division, is requesting a transfer of $2,500 from Category 3 to Category 1 Personnel Services to cover higher-than-anticipated personnel costs. The Cumulative Capital Development Fund, which is under Public Works, is requesting a transfer of $300,000 from Category 2 Supplies to Category 3 to cover the costs associated with the milling machine purchase. And the savings in Category 2 comes from having the de-icing salt dome full. So we're ready for winter. Vehicle Replacement Fund is within the Controllers Department. This department is requesting an appropriation of $180,000 in Category 4 capital to cover the purchase of a replacement sanitation truck. The current appropriated funds, along with the proceeds from the sale of the old sanitation truck, will cover the cost of a new purchase. Solid Waste Fund Sanitation Department is requesting a $25,000 transfer of funds from Category 2 Supplies to Category 3 to cover the end-of-the-year landfill and recycling processing expenditures. And the savings will come from lower-than-anticipated fuel and oil costs. Finally, we have Fleet Maintenance Fund, which is under Public Works' Fleet Department. This department requests a transfer of $85,000 from Category 2 Supplies to Category 3 to cover the higher-than-anticipated outside service repairs of engines, transmissions, lift repairs, and also the installation of a welding hood. So that wraps up the requests for additional appropriations for 2023. Do I have any questions?
So, questions from council? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Gillan. I just had a question about the Vehicle Replacement Fund. In the memo, it says there's no fiscal impact.
Right.
But aren't we appropriating money that we wouldn't otherwise appropriate? So it's...
So, we've already appropriated for the year, but the sale of the used vehicle, which was $180,000, has not been appropriated into the fund. So we're appropriating that into the fund to increase the overall fund account, which will allow them to purchase the new vehicle.
Okay, so it's the trade-in value that needs to be appropriated?
Exactly.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Questions? Councilmember Rallo?
Yes, you mentioned, I think it was $12,000 from Category 1 to 2 for the mayor's office for employee turnover.
Yes.
Could you have described specifically what that consists of?
So, it would, that particular department has experienced a number of employees leaving throughout the year. So their payout costs ended up causing a deficit at the end of the year. So we're just covering, balancing out that particular line.
That's what I was wondering. Well, maybe I should reserve this for comment. Thank you.
Additional questions? Seeing none, let's go to public comment on appropriation ordinance 2308. If you are in chambers and you would like to offer comment, please approach the podium. Mr. Lucas, can you extend our invitation on Zoom, please?
Yes. There are members of the public that wish to speak to this item. Please raise your hand in Zoom. You can do that by clicking the More tab or the Reactions tab in your control bar. You can also send a chat to the host to let us know you'd like to speak, and we will recognize you that way.
And let's begin here in chambers. If you would, sign in and introduce yourself, and then you'll have three minutes.
Good evening, councilmembers. Very briefly, just wanted to bring up $870,000 from the, I'm sorry, Jeff Rogers, FOP Vice President, Representative for BPD. Again, $870,000 from Category 1 from the Police Department. That's because we are so shorthanded. We just hired two officers today. That brings us to 85. We're 20 officers down from where we should be. Any other city would find that to be an emergency. Mayor Hamilton has been very diligent on trying to create enhancements to recruiting. We have tried to say over and over again, it is retention. We have to keep the officers that we have. I am hopeful that the next administration will be much more receptive to that and understand that we can't continue to lose an average of 11 officers per year. Doesn't matter how many we hire. If we lose that many, we're never going to get to where we need to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments here in chambers? Or, Mr. Lucas, do we have anyone on Zoom?
Not that I see, no.
Okay. Seeing no further comment, let's come back to council. Are there additional questions? Councilmember Rallo?
Yes, I think I'll follow up on this.
Yes, I think I'll follow up on this. So, back in September, there was an article in AHT about employee, employees who were leaving who received bonuses at the end, and there's, there seems to be a lot of questions, I think, still revolving around that. I, I think that the total was probably in the neighborhood of $100,000 in total. And this was, in the article, the mayor said this was standard practice, that this happens. It's not unusual to be paid for unused bonus time and holiday and so forth. However, I, I haven't been aware of it in the past. Is this something that is a yearly phenomenon? Should we expect it? Has it been occurring every year? Just this year, we haven't... It's just news to me.
Good evening, Councilmember Rallo, Larry Allen, Deputy Mayor. In this case, no, it's not something expected year to year. In the case of the Office of the Mayor, we had, we did have extraordinary turnover. We had two deputy mayors leave at this, within the calendar year they would have been paid out for, according to the policy, according to the City of Bloomington manual, they get paid out for any unused, a certain amount, I should say, of unused vacation time in addition to comp time. These positions, obviously, as being part of the Office of the Mayor work typically very long hours and end up accruing a lot of that vacation time. In addition to the two deputy mayors, we also had a Communications Director and a Director of Public Engagement also depart. So the department experienced almost 100% turnover, and as of January 1st, I believe we will have experienced 100% turnover in the Office of the Mayor. So it's not something that's unusual, but this, in this case, this was an unusually high year of turnover in the Office of the Mayor. And then when you calculate under the manual, this is what every employee is entitled to whenever they leave employment voluntarily in the City of Bloomington, which is if you have a certain amount of unused PTO and/or comp time that you use as an exempt employee or that you've acquired as an exempt employee, you do, you do get paid out for that in accordance to your salary.
So this is standard practice, you're saying?
That's correct.
And it occurs every year? However, the turnover has not occurred every year? But it occurs, it occurs when people leave, is what you're saying?
Yeah, it occurs throughout the city all the time.
Oh, sorry. So if I look, I can find that this has occurred for employees who have left in the past?
Yes.
Any employee?
Well, it's any employee that's, that's voluntarily left. So if you're terminated for cause or something like that, you're not, you don't get paid for that.
Sure, okay, got it. Yeah. Okay, very good. Thanks.
Thank you. Additional questions?
Seeing none, is there any final comment on Appropriation Ordinance 2308? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
I guess I'll just say I'm glad we don't have to appropriate a bunch of new money. So it evened out in the General Fund. That was good to see.
Thank you. Additional final comments? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on Appropriation Ordinance 2308? Sandberg?
Abstain.
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
And Rallo?
Yes.
And that passes 8-0-1. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Ms. Gillian.
Madam President, I move that Resolution 2323 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Will the clerk please call the roll on the motion to introduce? Smith?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Thank you, and that passes 9-0. Will the clerk please read?
Resolution 2323, a resolution authorizing the sale of real property regarding 220 East Third Street. The synopsis is as follows. This resolution approves the sale of the real estate located at 220 East Third Street in accordance with the procedure set forth in Indiana Code 36-111.
Thank you. We have...
Madam President?
Oh, sorry.
I move that Resolution 2323 be adopted.
Second.
Thank you. That's twice tonight I've done that. So, and I believe we have Deputy Mayor Allen with us?
Thank you. Larry Allen, Deputy Mayor, thank you for having me. I hope none of you get too nervous seeing another PowerPoint, yet another PowerPoint from me in as many days, but I appreciate it. So this is Resolution 2323 for the sale of real property, and in this case, it's Bloomington Police Headquarters, the current Bloomington Police Headquarters located at 220 East Third Street. Just to summarize this resolution briefly, so this, this does authorize the sale of real property that we mentioned, the sale is made pursuant to Indiana Code 36-111. Under that particular provision of Indiana Code, it is required to have City Council approval before any real property in this manner can be sold. We have obtained, just to jump to the end, just so right up top, we know what we're talking about, we received three bids during the sale period, and the city believes that it has received a best and highest offer from GMS Pavilion Properties for $4.4 million. And if approved, this would enable the administration to negotiate the closing with the buyer, but to be clear, the closing would occur in 2024, so it would have to be conducted by the next administration. What this would do simply is to authorize that administration to pursue the closing of this property. So, the mayor already gave you significant background, so I'll kind of move past this part just to remind everybody, you know, this is from the flood, and what we found is that both Fire Station One and the BPD Headquarters were not only susceptible for flood, but also kind of inadequate for some of the modern requirements. You all passed the ED Lit, the Economic Development Local Income Tax, and dedicated $2 million from that for bond service, and then you approved bonds for public safety projects, which included four different projects. The Fire Station One, the renovation of that, which is the downtown fire station located on Fourth Street, the, the moving forward of Showers West, which included the purchase of the Showers West building and renovation for use as the new police headquarters and fire administration headquarters, and then also renovation of Fire Station Three, which is on campus, near IU's campus, and then a new training and logistics and storage center for the fire department as well, at least just exploring the feasibility of that. The sale of the current police headquarters was a part of the financing that we had said would be needed to complete all of those projects. We also, at that time, had included a proposal to use former creed funds, but that was removed verbally the night of. So what we have now in terms of the sources of funds really is, remains is the sale of the current police headquarters in addition to the bond. And just to go through some of the sources and uses of those public safety project funds that we have, I mentioned the ED Lit bond. So from the sales of the bond, we conservatively, and I can give some context to this, obtained $27.1 million. The, if the offer is accepted that we have tonight, $4.4 million would come from the sale of the police headquarters. And then there was a little bit from the insurance company from the flood of Fire Station One, so just for full disclosure, that was included in here as well, almost $370,000. And then we had the projects, the projects that were listed that I just listed, so Fire Station One, initially, that was budgeted for $4.5 to $5.5 million. With soft costs and construction costs, we received, those went out to bid, we received those bids back for construction. The total cost, including soft costs and hard construction costs, is about $5.3 million, almost $5.4 million for Fire Station One. Showers West, also a project that was designed fully and put out to bid, those bids came back last week. The construction cost bid came back under what was initially thought at $12.7 million, and the all-in costs with carrying costs for various things that are, are to be done, and including the design costs and construction manager costs are 14 point, about 14.7 million, just under that, as you can see. The purchase of Showers West is also in that, that was one of the first things that was done with the bond proceeds that we got, so that, the bond proceeds were used to purchase Showers West. We do own that in the name of the Redevelopment Commission, and that was purchased for about $8.75 million. Fire Station Three and the Fire Training and Logistics Center are both still budgeted there in the early development stages, but those are budgeted for $1.5 million apiece. So you see, if, if we go forward with the sale in terms of those proceeds, we have enough funds to cover all of the projects, we believe, so $13.869 million. There's a, there's a numeral that's missing from, from that first column, so I apologize in the total column on the, under the sources, versus $31,808,000. I think the difference comes out to about just $68,000, $67,000, $68,000 in coverage. Now that to say, we did have some discussion about whether we would be able to cover this from bond funds alone, and it does look like, based on where Fire Station One came with all of the costs calculated, I will, there's a bit of an asterisk there, but all of the costs calculated and what the projections are for construction manager costs, that there would likely be a shortfall, some degree of a shortfall if we were just to do Fire Station One and Showers West. It's not so significant that we couldn't do those in terms of, we wouldn't be able to find other, under other funding sources, but just to be very clear about that, that there would be a shortfall that would need to be made up to complete both of those projects. And it would, of course, exclude the ability to move forward with Fire Station Three and the Fire Training and Logistics Center. So now, just to describe a little bit of the process of what it takes to sell real property like this, it's owned by the city in terms of the police headquarters. This is governed by Indiana Code, Chapter 36-111. As I mentioned, the, the use of these proceeds were going to be part of constructing the new, the new headquarters. We did obtain pursuant to the, pursuant to the statute, you have to obtain two appraisals. We obtained those appraisals. They came back at $3.2 million and $4.4 million respectively. And then the executive is to designate a body to both issue a notice and hold a public hearing. The administration designated the Board of Public Works, which issued a notice to begin the sale period. That ran through, from October 25th through December 12th. The restriction there is that, that period cannot be longer than 60 days. So in this case, it was a little bit under 60 days. In total, after that period closed, and actually well before that period closed, we received three offers. Just so you know, this went to the Board of Public Works on December 8th, and according to the statute, any qualifying offer can be considered within the sale period. You don't have to wait for that period to close to consider qualifying offers. And what we had from our, the real estate company that we had engaged with is that it was very unlikely that we were to obtain any more than the three offers, and that turned out to be the case. We did not receive any more offers than those three. The Board of Public Works, I think, next slide, I'm sorry. The Board of Public Works did consider the three offers on Friday, December 8th, as I mentioned, at a public hearing. They took public comment, and ultimately, the board made a finding of no recommendation to the administration. At least one of the concerns that was raised at the board was that the period had not closed. Since then, as I mentioned, the period has closed, and we have not received any additional offers, so the three offers we had are what was received during the period. And then, that, that recommendation goes to the administration, but ultimately, as I mentioned before, under Section 3C, the common council has to approve any sale of property, and that's because this was valued at over $50,000. So just briefly, in terms of this specific sale, one of the issues that has arisen that we've talked about a little bit is a deed restriction that remained on the property. So originally, when this property was donated to the city, there was reversionary language on that particular deed that said that it had to be used for a free public park. The city legal did look at this last year and concluded that we could sell the property for a variety of reasons. Even with that, we've continued to do the due diligence, and this would be part of the normal closing process. So even if authorized to sell this property tonight, this process would have to continue and have to give final assurance with the buyers and come to an agreement of a title commitment. That's, that's part of any closing. It usually happens after this kind of approval and into the due diligence period. The city would also want to continue dialogue with the donor families, which we've started. We believe that there's some information out there that I think we warrant a back-and-forth with them still, and we've certainly been having, engaging in some conversations together and also with title companies and research. As I mentioned, the review of this deed will continue and be part of the normal closing process. I think, just one thing, just to note, and we've said this from the beginning, is where the park exists today, that butts up against the parking lot, is not considered part of the sale. So the park in and of itself would not change, shape would not change, duration would not alter the park as it exists today, and that's a park that we continue to make investments into and plan to. And, and similarly with the dialogue with the donors, the original donors, you know, it's something that we want to honor, the many gifts that they've given throughout the city and the engagement that they've had throughout the City of Bloomington. We really appreciate that, and we do not want to get into any kind of necessarily hostile situation with them. We, we do appreciate all the work that they've had. So, just to move on through the three offers we received and describe those briefly, so you can evaluate also how, how we evaluated this and how we received them. The first offer was from Aptitude Development, which is based out of New Jersey. It offered a purchase price of $4.85 million, which you'll note is well above the highest appraised value. It contains a due diligence period of about 120 days. However, there is a significant contingency on this offer, which is that closing would occur 30 days after a final, non-appellable approval of the development of student housing of at least 475 bedrooms, which is a significant-sized development for that, which could also take a significant amount of time. One of the requirements we had here is to have a holdover clause. Some people have referred to it as a leaseback, so that the police department, obviously, can remain in the building while the renovations of Showers West continue and until they're ready to move in. For this particular group, they said that they would be allowed to remain for the duration of the approval period, so while they're trying to get their site plan for the student housing approved, and then potentially, they would agree to a maximum extension of six months upon written notice to them. The second offer comes from a local company, GMS Pavilion Properties. Steve Hoffman, which many of you know and are familiar with the developments there. In this case, this was offered a purchase price of $4.4 million, which includes $40,000 of earnest money. This was matched the, the highest appraisal that we had received. The due diligence period here is 60 days, and, and in this case, the contingency here is normal closing due diligence. It does, is not contingent upon a site plan approval or approval of any particular project, which we feel like is significant and particularly engaging in the downtown. It also offers a more generous holdover, leaseback period, two years at $420,000 a year, though. So the guarantee, though, is that 18 months of potential leaseback there, and the lease may extend even beyond that. So if there was, for some reason, something that delayed the project or delayed, delayed the moving of the police department, there would be an ability to extend there, which is important. And I think another thing to note about this particular offer is that it also mentioned at least multiple uses, so not just student housing, but potentially hotel and condo. So they're, they're open to at least considering different uses besides student housing. The third offer is from Up Campus Student Living. I guess it could be UP Campus Student Living. I'm going to say Up. I don't know. I'm from Indiana. I didn't, I guess I should have asked them what they preferred before coming into the meeting. They're a Chicago-based company. They offered a purchase price at the minimum price, which was $3.2 million, $100,000 of earnest money, a due diligence period of 45 days, did require the typical due diligence as part of closing, and allowed one year of holdover at 10% of the closing cost with a 2% annual increase if we went beyond one year. And so in the evaluation of this, again, this was for pure student housing, potential development would be requested. Because the bid comes in so low, even though 10% of the closing cost produces a lower holdover amount, so the lease amount that we would have for the holdover, we would, we would realize less money from this particular offer if it was to be accepted over offer number two. So therefore, you know, for some of those reasons that I've already previewed, our recommendation is that the best offer is the GMS Pavilion Properties. $4.4 million substantially exceeds what the minimum bid was, and also the estimated $3 million that we desired for the support of these public safety capital projects. The holdover terms are flexible and they're favorable to the city to ensure what's going to be a smooth transition for BPD. It is a well, a well-reputed local developer. It's not contingent on any prior planning approval, which we saw kind of... approval, which we saw kind of as that has the real risk of delaying any closing and potentially falling through later down the line. For instance, for Offer One, if they don't get all of those bedrooms approved, then you're into a renegotiation. In addition, you're into a renegotiation if they get it independently appraised, and they can't justify the cost to their bank. They may try to lower the price on that. So that was a concern that we had as well, even though it came over the amount. And then finally, that range of uses, we believed, is more in keeping with the downtown edges, that it might potentially have the opportunity to develop different types of uses there and be economically advantageous to that area of the community. So just going through, what are the next steps? So if this is approved tonight, the city begins the due diligence towards closing with the approved offeror, which we're recommending to be GMS Pavilion. So that does mean continuing to go through not just the title issues, but also there would be some due diligence on the property itself and looking at the land, things like that. As I mentioned, the new administration would be the entity that's authorized to pursue this closing. That closing will not happen by the end of this year. That's just not feasible, and it's not within even the time period. So remember, the due diligence period for this one was 60 days. Obviously, that puts us into February already for a due diligence period. So the earliest you're potentially looking at closing, I mean, they could finish that up earlier, but likely, you're talking about mid to late February at the earliest for closing on this. So that will be for the next administration. What this would enable as well, Fire Station One and Showers West would continue with their construction as planned. As mentioned, those have already gone out to bid. We've received those bids back, and they're favorable. Those were, as I listed the uses before, those were in order of priority. So Fire Station One and the new police headquarters have been the priority from the beginning. But it would mean that potentially, if it's not approved, Fire Station Three and the training facility would be put on hiatus, at least pause until we figure out whether there could be an alternate source of funding for that. But if this is approved, then Fire Station Three would move from, right now, I think, I believe we have, I don't know if we have 100% schematic design, but we're very close to 100% schematic design. It would be able to move to a full design, so that part would continue. And then there's additional feasibility for the fire training logistics and storage facility. One of the things I know that they've done, some of the early work on determining what the footprint would be, how it could be built out in the future so that we'd be able to flesh that out a little bit more and determine how that could be phased in in the long run to serve our fire department's needs. And with that, we're happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Allen. Start with Councilmember Rollow.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. I'll begin with, what you said was that your office, the administration is still reviewing the deed. It sounds like there's a bit of hesitancy there. That is, there's a lack of resolution? Or could you tell me, can you state specifically why the deed restriction is no longer applicable, will no longer result in reversion?
As far as the legal descriptions, we have Corporation Counsel Kate here, and I'm sure she's happy to discuss some of those, although there are good reasons why we don't necessarily want to discuss all those. I will say that we did determine a year ago, as we mentioned, that we could sell this. We still believe that that's the case. We have concluded that that's the case, and the more information that we uncover, the more we feel like that we were correct in our initial analysis of this. The only reason why I'm not really expressing any hesitancy, I'm just trying to be as accurate as possible just to inform the council. We don't have today, for instance, a title commitment in our hand from an underwriter who's insured this. So I just, I'm not trying to go out that far and describe that, but that doesn't mean that we're any less confident that we wouldn't potentially prevail in the ability to sell it this year.
So when you say prevail, do you anticipate litigation that would increase costs of this proposal?
We don't, we don't want that to happen. I just know that that was raised in the letter that was sent by Mr. Hill, potentially. He did raise the specter of litigation. Of course, it only takes the filing fee to raise, to file a lawsuit. So just understanding that that's the reality. But as I mentioned, that's one of the reasons why we want to continue the dialogue. We don't want it to get to that point.
Thanks. That's all for now.
Thank you. Councilmember Rollow.
Yes. The, I'm concerned about the Station Three renovation and the training facility, because the initial estimates for each of those was 2.5 million, and that's been downgraded to 1.5 million, I suppose because the creed funds could not be used. Is, has, have there been any, I mean, is there a professional basis to suggest that the needed renovations and, in the one case, and the construction in the training center case can still be done for 1.5 million with quality work and long, sustainable building practices?
Yeah. So what I'll say is, given the preliminary portion that we are with each of those, I don't think a full and fulsome budget, but that's certainly, you know, this is kind of what we've been dealing with, both with Showers West and also Fire Station One, which is, once you have a set budget, that's what you can work within. So you start to prioritize what can be done within those projects to make them, obviously, come up to code, make them safe, make them whatever they need to be within that budget. So that's something we would just work diligently towards, to stay within that 1.5 million dollar budget. The other option here, if for some reason, just to be clear, if the budget for, say, Fire Station Three came in and it was estimated to be $2 million, then that's where we look at that prioritization. Maybe we have, maybe we start an earlier phase or a scaled-down phase of the Training and Logistics and Storage Center to devote more of those funds to Fire Station Three, and then over time, you know, you finish out the other project, or maybe the project can't happen at all, which is one of the realities that we were looking at if we don't get the proceeds from this particular sale. We either have to make up that fund from somewhere else, or we have to prioritize these projects and to move the funds around to what we've already committed to.
Okay. And according to your projections for Fire Station One, it seems like you'll save a little bit, I don't know, $200,000 or $140,000?
From the initial, from the initial 5.5.
From the initial 5.5, yeah.
Yeah. And the same is true with Showers West in terms of, you know, initially, I think we had told you we had projected about $15 million, so that's coming in just under $15 million. Both of those also have some projected costs that we also could potentially look at. So the construction manager labor, for instance, which means the amount of time that we have the construction manager at the site is something that we could look at in terms of, do we have a staff person play that role and try to lean on them less and things like that? There's also value engineering that could be done still. So we've gone through the design phase, and now as we look at the price of materials and getting these, the construction companies, maybe there's always potentially opportunities to save a little bit here and there, and so we do always look out for those. But that's just part of the management of the project as it goes on.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rollow.
And then Councilmember Smith.
Thank you.
I have a number of questions. I'm not sure which one to ask first. Why not use TIF funds to fund some of this? Why not use rainy day funds? Our rainy day fund has been far in excess of state recommendations for as long as I can remember. Why not make a one-time expenditure from rainy day to get it down to the state-required percentage of what we need to operate and use that on the two Fire Station projects?
Yeah. So that's possible, Councilmember Rollow, and certainly, if that's the council's will, that'll be up to the next council, obviously. We haven't brought any appropriation over. It hasn't been noticed or anything like that tonight. But it'd be up to the next council. If this council decided not to move forward, or if it felt like it wanted to make up those funds in some other way, yeah, there would be a, there could be a proposal set forward where we could use those different funds. TIF funds, I know that for at least the design contracts, we have listed that as a potential backup for that, just as prudent measure. We didn't anticipate using TIF funds. Obviously, we have major projects going on with the TIF already in Hopewell and Trades District, so we kind of want to direct those funds towards those types of things. But you're correct in terms of, could alternate funding be found? It is possible that alternative funding be found. What we are doing, though, is carrying out what we believe that this council desired when it passed it a year ago, is including the sale as part of the proceeds that would be used for these projects.
I know that the 7th and Morton Street garages were built in 2001, 2003, respectively. Surely, those bonds are coming due. Can't we reallocate that TIF money to the fire departments?
Well, I mean, the TIF money is, it's a continually renewing fund as for proper guidance.
I'm just saying, if you're concerned about putting money, TIF money to too many projects, I mean, I don't really get what the administration's priority is for using TIF funds, or how, what portion of what's available that the administration wants to use. I've never really understood that.
Yeah. And certainly, what I cannot do, as I stand here, is obligate the next administration and the next council to what they may want to do in terms of funding this. What we could say is, is it an option? It is certainly an option. It's a lawful option that could be explored, but I can't commit those to you.
Thank you. I'll have more questions, but I'll hold for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. What would prevent the city, and I know it's, that the administration now will kind of end, you know, and, but what would prevent the city from selling the rest of the park? Like, if they just said, yeah, okay, this developer just offered us 25 million for another 100 yards of it. I mean, what's going to prevent that?
Yeah. So one of the things we've looked at, in part, is the historic uses of these properties, just to be, not to get too far into the weeds about it, but certainly, there's a clear line where this park has existed. It's existed for the entire duration, right? And then there's a part of this parcel, which includes the parking lot and the police headquarters, so the police building, as we're talking about it right now, that's been offered for sale, that for over 50 years has not been used as part of a park, right? That just has not been used as part of a park. What it looks like is that the intent of the parties was that was not going to be part of the park any longer with that building. Now, everything else, we have always treated as part of the park. We have treated as though that reversionary language is still apt. So it's just in terms of the way it's historically been used and the evidence that we've found, I don't think that that's something that we're entertaining, and that's not, doesn't appear to be the intent of either party.
I was just playing devil's advocate. So here's the other follow-up question I have is, so when the administration found out that there was a reversion clause approximately a year ago, I know that it's hard for you to answer, but why wasn't it disclosed during the whole process? I don't think any of us on the council knew, and, you know, it probably wouldn't have changed my vote because I voted against it, right? But honestly, I don't understand, I understand why the public's very interested in it now, and people are a little bit exercised about it. But, I mean, what was, why not just disclose it during that process and say, you know, here's the full layout of what's going on?
Yeah. And I believe it's based on that conclusion, that we could sell that parcel of property, so we did not believe that that would be a barrier to the sale of the property.
Yeah, it might have been, it could have been a barrier. Yeah. I mean, but I appreciate it.
If you don't mind if I can...
Yeah, please do.
Yeah. I, from my perspective, a year ago plus, the question was, do we have the right to sell this property? Legal team investigated, said yes. That was kind of the depth of, you know, the, we didn't, I didn't see the deed at that time. I didn't look to see the deed at that time. The question was, can we sell it? And the answer was yes, after the due diligence of the legal department, talking to title attorneys and others. And that continues to be the assessment. When the letter came from the Hill brothers, who I've had good cordial meetings with, and I know are here and enjoyed that, I said, well, let's, we better look at that deed. And we did double-check, and that's what the due diligence is. But I hadn't seen the deed at that time either. We weren't, we weren't, we were just based upon the legal analysis and going forward. I did also want to just mention quickly, too, I think the good news overall is that the wheel set in motion a year ago to sell the bonds and sell the building, by what we've shown you tonight, do pay for all four projects, which is great. That's what we estimated, even without the creed. By the way, the fire chief has said he believes that $3 million is sufficient to do a good job on those two buildings, though it may take some creativity. But that's the good news. And yes, of course, if that funding is not available, as Councilmember Rollow asked, if that funding is not available, are there other sources, absolutely, for a future administration or future council to look at? But the good news is that the two sources that were identified pay for the four projects that we intended to fund. So I'll leave it at that. Thanks.
Round one questions. Councilmember Rosenbarger.
So for the Pavilion offer, it could be, it's $420,000 a year to re-lease the police station. So potentially, you sort of had that up as like two-year, possibility of two years for $840,000. Is that included in the cost of the renovation on that chart?
We have not included that as part of the cost of the renovation on the chart. So that can be paid from another, a number of other sources, including the operating sources potentially.
Okay. And just with, on that, on that table, I guess, it does say the proceeds are 4.4 million, but with like the realtor fee, that's, is that like $400,000 taken out of there? I mean, our proceeds aren't 4.4 million.
It would come out of whatever, after the closing costs and share of the closing costs of that to be negotiated as part of that deal. Yeah, there would be some sort of closing cost there.
Okay. And then, while I was going to ask, is that offer, are these offers negotiable? So can you come back to Pavilion or something to, you know, ask for a, like, lower rate on the lease or anything?
Yeah. So we did engage in some of that back and forth, and of course, you know, before a deal is closed, there's always an opportunity for potential negotiation. So if we are authorized to do that, we could certainly try to do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional round one questions. Okay, if not, I'll take a turn. Mr. Lucas, can you please put up the slide that says project, or sources and uses, sources and projects? It was a table that showed the income we anticipated and the cost of the Thank you. And Deputy Mayor Allen, you said that there's roughly a $68,000 difference between the amount brought in by the various sources you list and the cost of the projects. That makes me a little nervous. That doesn't seem, that seems to be cutting it very close in your projections here. And it seems like it would be very easy to hit cost overruns or something that make it impossible for us to do the kind of job that police and fire deserve. Could you comment on that?
Yeah. So one of the things to keep in mind is for Fire Station One and Showers West, when we have those bids come back, those do include the contingency cost within that number that you're seeing up on the screen. So there are contingencies built in both of those, both of those projects to allow for any unforeseen change orders or something like that. That is pretty normal for part of these projects. So there is some of that buffer that's built in. So, and there's some conservative estimates within those. I think it was more fleshed out in the memo for, for instance, the construction manager costs. So just, I'm just taking that as a, for instance, in the Showers West, for instance, I believe what that's estimated to be is approximately $775,000. Now, that's projected over the entire life of the project, as many hours as they could potentially use, but that's an area where you look at and you say, you know, if we, if we really only have $500,000 to spend in that area, then we will instruct them, you cannot spend any more than this. Like, we would need to communicate that to them and monitor that to try to find areas of savings there. So there are areas where there are potential savings, where this is, if everything fully goes to, uses up all of the contingencies, all of the funds that are there, and we use that maximum amount of estimated construction manager fees for the projects, this is what you come out with. But it is a little bit more of a conservative estimate. There are, there's some of that built into the flexibility, of course.
Okay. I may have more questions about contingencies as we go. Additional round one questions. Round two, Councilmember Rollow and Councilmember Rollow.
I would like to bring to everyone's attention the email that we received from Randy Lloyd today, who served in the Board of Public Works in 1997, when the building was first being contemplated as a police headquarters. He writes that, "It has come to my attention that you'll be considering taking action this evening on offer as letters of intent for the police department property. I have personal experience in dealing with the recorded reversionary interest for some of the related property. If it helps in your deliberations, I was on the Board of Public Works in 1997, when this issue arose during the transition of the former City Hall to police headquarters. As I recall, the parking areas and perhaps other parcels that had been open to the public and for use for the adjacent park was needed for the police department. At that time, City Legal informed the BPW of the reversionary interest. This is noted in the revised and recorded plat we signed as members." By the way, that document has been emailed to us as well. "To the best of my recollection, we were advised that the reversionary interest held by the family was valid and needed to be considered prior to any action. It was determined that due to the ongoing nature... be considered prior to any action. It was determined that due to the ongoing nature of the public use of the land, and presumably with no objections by representatives of the family, that amending the plat to include parcels subject to the reversionary interest did not negate or violate the words and spirit of the recorded interest. I think it is important for the council to understand that this topic had been addressed before and was deemed a valid legal interest. Private use of the subject parcels would seem legally contrary to the long-recognized reversionary interest of the families. The city has had a history of recognizing the validity of the reversionary interest and honoring it by maintaining its use for public purposes." My question to you now is, 1997 is less than 30 years from today, which is the figure that I understand for our council is the outer limit of when someone's reversionary interest may be considered to be mooted. Can you comment on this and why we should not consider their reversionary interest to be valid?
Well, I think that's getting into specifics. Again, I, I would think I would ask Corporation Kate to maybe talk to those specifics, if she's, if that's something she's inclined to do. In terms of what you've been told about, there, there is- There are, there's an Indiana statute, just to get into it to this level, just to be clear, there is an Indiana statute that does declare void reversionary interests after a certain point, 30 years. So this, clearly, this reversionary interest entered into a deed in the 1920s is older than 30 years. So by the plain face of that statute, the reversionary interests, and particularly as it applies to, to what's called naked reversionary interest, probably, I would not think applies-
Say it again.
Was, does not apply any further under the, the language of that statute. Likewise, there is a separate subsection of that statute which would terminate the causes of action for, to uphold that, that reversionary interest under the same timeline. Again, we're dealing with a timeline that far exceeds that. Now, in addition to that, I'll just note, in terms of the plat and the language, the language does not say for a public purpose, just in terms of what we've looked at and what you've all seen. It very clearly says for a free public park. There's no question that for more than 50 years, this area that's been used as a police station has not been used for a free public park. And that has not been challenged. It has not been part of it. I, I understand Mr. Lloyd's email, and I appreciate, you know, talking about the spirit of it, but this is why, you know, we have people that are looking into this and looking at the details. I think this is also part of the conversation that we want to have with the families, and just talk about the way this, this happened, also talking about the different deeds that have been recorded over history in addition to some of the language on the plat. And my understanding of that particular plat is that the language states, and I, and I could be wrong about this, so Councilmember Volin, I apologize if I am wrong, I, I'm happy to own that, just, is it says that some portion of the land represented in this plat is subject to a reversionary interest. And that plat that was recorded does include some parts that are still actively the park area, very, non-disputed up here with all of us, that's part of the park area. What it doesn't do, though, or what I did not see that it does, and maybe somebody else has, is cover the specific meets and bounds and parcels that were covered under that particular, that particular reversionary interest. So it's not as specific, I don't believe, as what Mr. Lloyd is, is quite claiming, but, but again, I, I'll fully admit if I'm wrong in that regard.
Well, I think we need to get to the bottom of it. I'm certainly interested in, in what took place at that meeting then, but I just want to point out that it's only been a police station for 27 years before that it was Bloomington City Hall, for, I don't know, what year was the building built?
It's in the 1960s. I, I don't-
Okay, 62, 64, something like that. So it's, it was, half the time it was City Hall, half the time it was police station. The whole time, it was a municipal building, which could still be argued is a public purpose, maybe just not a park. But this is a, an utterly different use, one that is, let's call it controversial in a city like this. I mean, I just did the math. Smallwood is, has 700 bedrooms and it's eight stories tall, assuming there's nobody on the first floor. That's 100 people a floor on a building that's an entire square block. That one vendor that bid 4.8 million, 475 bedrooms would be a tower of taller than the tallest building ever built in Bloomington.
And, and that's certainly why we're not recommending that particular offer as more than we consider.
More than that, thank you.
Councilmember Rallo.
Thank you for that question, Councilmember Volin. I, I thank you for that question. Anticipated a lot of what I was going to explore, except to say that I would have said that it was, that Third Street, the structure was built to be a police station, despite the fact that it was occupied by, by, by City Hall. But my question, Mr. Allen, is referring to the $12.5 million cost for renovation. Does that include the exterior? Does that include security concerns, ingress egress, parking deficiencies, things that were brought up by the FOP?
You know, what it, what it includes is there's some redesign of the parking lot to accommodate certain measures, or increase generator size and things like that. What it does not include, and what has not been contemplated, is a full redesign of the ingress egress of, of the road or anything else. However, what, what it does also include is a gated area to be installed within the parking garage to allow for secured parking on the lower level of the parking garage, those 58 spaces on the lowest level so that we would dedicate to, for Bloomington police uses. It does not, it also includes contingencies for, I think, one of the conversations we had was the police radio tower movement. It does conclude contingencies for moving the police radio tower, which were validated by our construction manager as part of the carrying cost estimates under there to, to be relocated on-site. But it doesn't include necessarily redesign of the B-line or something like that. And that's one of the things we had a discussion about among several city departments in terms of looking at the best approach to, to evaluating that. And with our engineering department, our planning department, our parking department, and what we, what we landed on in terms of the best approach to that was that, first of all, parking should be considered, the surface lot that is serving Showers West, but also serving this showers building should be considered as a whole, for, as an employee parking lot. And so we could, should consider the flow and the, what that looks like for the future and have them, have them look at that. But, but one of the key parts of that is also gathering data about that usage and anticipated usage and moving on to planning that out. And so that was one of the requests that was made, as, that came out of those group meetings with engineering and planning.
So just to dig a little deeper here, it doesn't include a security fence, does it?
It does not.
It doesn't, the estimate is, it includes approximately 60 parking spaces, but the FOP says that their needs are much greater than that.
Well, I'm not talking about all the parking that'll be made available to them. What I'm talking about is just the secured parking. So there are 58 spaces of secured parking, but what we have also accounted for is that there is enough capacity in the garage, the Trades District garage, that would absorb, so what we received, that would absorb the parking needs. And what we had received for police was a 20-year-out parking projection, and so we use that number still. Could we absorb that amount of parking for the 20-year-out parking needs for the police department? And it was determined that we can, in addition to fire administration, in addition to visitors, and, and in addition to other Trades District uses that may be coming on in terms of leasing those spaces.
And it doesn't include the relocation of the radio antenna, correct?
It does include the relocation of the-
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes, Mr. Allen, I'd like to go back to an issue that Councilmember Rosenbarger raised. So the, the sale price of the BPD station from the bid that you recommend is 4.4 million, but that full amount is carried over onto our sources of funds. But shouldn't, isn't the realtor going to get part of that?
Yeah, as I mentioned, so there would be some closing cost. The closing cost, I would anticipate that it would reduce some of those funds to some extent. Now, now, the caveat here is, is closing costs can sometimes move both ways, depending on whether the buyer and seller gets credits. Not trying to be cagey with this, but this is part of what you do in the due diligence period, is you kind of figure out what these closing costs are going to be, and how the lease is going to work, and what, what maybe credits could be earned, and, and the negotiation back and forth. Certainly, there would be fees that would be potentially taken out of that. I think the other thing I would note, which we talked, I kind of alluded to earlier, just briefly, which is the 4.1, sorry, the $27.1 million in bond funds that we received. We also have earned some amount of interest over the past year on that money sitting in our bank. So, and it's been, I think, to, in, I don't know if it's as of date or as of maybe last month, but I think it was approximately $70,000 in interest. So those funds, there is some extra funds there that we're not accounting for. We're trying to be a little conservative with that amount in terms of what's actually in our accounts as well. So just in terms of that, what's appearing to be a thin margin includes is some contingencies. Certainly, there's closing costs out of the purchase price. I don't want to gloss over those. Those, those would be part of it. And we do have the realtors here, so they maybe will speak in more detail to that. But generally, there, there are some, there's some padding that's built into those, those numbers.
Well, that doesn't really answer my question, so, I mean, if, if the realtor gets 2%, that, that's $90,000 we don't have, right, or a little bit less. So, where's that going to be made up?
That's what I meant by there, there's some other, there's actually additional funds, like, maybe in some of the other sources that we're being a little conservative with, that might make up some of that difference there.
I mean, I asked for clear accounting, and I'm, I'm getting some very broad accounting that, and then a lot of footnotes, so this is concerning to me.
Letting, letting Larry breathe a minute, too, but if I may, also, we are very pleased that we received bids for Showers West, which of course is not directly in front of you tonight, but we're very pleased that we got bids for Showers West that are right in line with the estimates. And all of these processes, including the closing costs for the, for the, for the transaction at issue here, are, are going to be negotiated. What, what the administration is asking council tonight is to allow this administration and the next administration to negotiate those final details. Of course, any administration is going to have moving parts in any large project like this, but the numbers are good when we look at a project like this. And I think the decision for this council is, do we let this administration and the next administration negotiate to conclusion the purchase, the sale of the headquarters to facilitate the full project movement of the four projects? Or, if this council decides not to allow that to go forward, then the result will be this administration and the next administration will move forward with the bond proceeds and any other proceeds that we have to do the two highest priority projects. And the next administration and the next council will wrestle with, okay, what do we do about the other two projects? So I think, I mean, I'm happy to, we're happy to dig into those details, but the overall fiscal picture is very good with the sources that we've identified. And of course, there'll be negotiations to be done.
I'm not satisfied with the sort of non-answers, but, okay.
Thank you. Additional round two questions. Seeing none, let's go to public comment on Resolution 2323. If there is anyone here in chambers who would like to offer comment, please approach the podium. And Mr. Lucas, can you please extend our invitation on Zoom?
Yes, members of the public that wish to speak to this item, please let us know by raising your hand in Zoom. You can do that by clicking the raise hand button under your control bar. You can find that under the more tab or the reactions tab. If you can't locate the raise hand feature, please send a chat to the host to let us know you'd like to speak, and we will recognize you that way.
Okay. Welcome, if you would, please confirm your name for the record.
Nathaniel Usher Hill IV.
And then you'll have three minutes. Please go ahead.
He got an hour. Allow me to introduce myself. I am Nat Hill IV. You will hear my brother Philip Hill shortly. Our grandfather, Nat U. Hill II, and his brother Philip Buskirk Hill, were original signers of the deed. My brother and I are here today as heirs. I'm the better-looking one, to convince you that you should not approve this flawed sale. I need to start with a genuine apology. I'm genuinely sorry we haven't paid more attention to what has taken place at City Hall and here at the Bloomington City Council. I feel bad that so much time and energy has been spent getting everybody to this point. I also want to make it clear that we are not mad at Mayor Hamilton, the city council, or anybody else. Much has been made of the cordial discussion my brother and I did indeed have with the mayor. That's how discussions should be. I told Mayor Hamilton at our cordial meeting, and I repeat, it was a cordial meeting, that this sale would obviously result in another, quote, "nine-story student housing building with an empty retail first floor, and I forgot to add, with free underwater parking." The mayor assured us that wouldn't happen. Well, at the Public Works Board meeting Friday, which I watched, bid number three was for a 475-bedroom development on 1.3 acres. I think that violates the spirit of the intent. The mayor is firmly convinced this sale is a good and proper thing. We made it clear to the mayor that we simply disagree regarding the legality and fairness in selling 31% of the land initially described in the being, in the deed, as being used exclusively for a free public park for the use of the citizens of Bloomington, Indiana, in order to build another high-rise student building downtown. Wait a minute, that wasn't in the original deed, was it? Quickly switching gears, Bloomington is a town of never-ending generosity. There have been countless donations given over the years to this city. My brother and I have been very happy with the continuing faithfulness of the city in stewarding past donations. As far as we know up until now, the city has batted 100% in honoring the wishes of many donors. The proposed sale of the Waldron Hill and Buskirk Park property is way out of character for the city of Bloomington. So in winding down this short speech, who came up with the three-minute limit, anyway, I want to repeat, we're not mad at anybody. But I also repeat, we don't believe the sale of the park is legal, is in any way keeping in the spirit in which the transaction was put together, and certainly not an advisable thing to do to promote future giving. We're simply asking, asking you to do the right thing and vote against this resolution. I think I speak for all the heirs and their ancestors who originally deeded the park to the city when I said, when I say, we've all had good Christian reasons, we got eighth-grade educations, ain't no reason for y'all to be treating us this way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. So, who do we have next? Mr. Lucas, just to check in with you, do we have any takers on Zoom?
One hand raised at the moment and one written comment.
Okay, thank you. We'll get back to that in a second.
My name is James Haverstock, and I am here this evening representing the Waldron family. My wife Suzanne was the niece of Charlie and Cecil Waldron. Unfortunately, my wife passed away far too soon in 2017. We were married for 43 years, and I know what she would want me to say this evening. I've been in close contact with Sue's brother Donald, who lives here in Bloomington, and her sister Marilyn, both of whom are here. I've spoken with Charlie and Cecil's nephew, Dick Fowler, who lives in Minnesota, and I've been in close contact with Waldron cousins who are scattered throughout the country. The Waldron family speaks with one voice this evening. Three minutes is not enough time to detail all the contributions that the family has made to the city of Bloomington, but not just to the city, but those contributions were made to the citizens of Bloomington. But it is enough time to express the family's deep and heartfelt appreciation of your stewardship of all those contributions. You represent an unbroken chain of trust and commitment and dedication between the Waldrons and the city's spaces they contributed to the city's citizens of Bloomington. You have been faithful stewards of those possible, of those public spaces for more than 100 years. The secession of mayors and council members who came before you have protected the public's use and access to those properties as the Waldrons intended. Most recently, some of you here on this council protected and maintained the Waldron Art Center at Fourth and Walnut. And our art center was made possible some 30 years ago by a partnership between the city council and Aunt Cecil, who donated at that time $375,000, more than $850,000 in today's dollars, to renovate a city building which had been vacant for nearly five years. And two years ago, you council members made repairs to the building to keep it in the public domain, always for use by the public. public domain always for use by the public. And that is the close and personal relationship that the Waldron family has had with mayors and council members for more than 100 years. Tonight, the family thanks you and praises you for all you have done as public servants. That relationship always has been based on the trust we have, that you will protect and maintain those contributions as public spaces, maintained always for the use of the citizens of Bloomington. The Waldron family asks you that that partnership and trust will continue unbroken. So we say to you tonight, please, tonight, do not vote to sell any portion of the Third Street property. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Haverstock. Welcome. Once you've signed in, please share your name for the record, and then you'll have three minutes.
First, please forgive me, I have a cold, so I may be coughing and hacking during a lot of this. I'm Philip Hill. My brother was up earlier, and I am an ancestor of one of the, or two of the people who signed the deed and transferred the property to the city. We're very pleased that the city has kept it as a park. In all honesty, we weren't very pleased when it became a city hall and then a city police station, but it, but it was used for public use. That transfer was for the public good. The public could use it. The citizens of the city of Bloomington got use out of it. It was held by the city of Bloomington, and everyone had a part in that, and everyone used it and benefited from it. We believe that the letters in the deed are clear, it's to be used for a park. The spirit, or the intent is also clear. It's to be used for the public as a park. But if it wasn't a park, maybe a police station is okay. The, the spirit and intent are clear. This is to be a public real estate holding. We believe that should continue. We don't believe that it's right for the public to be denied use of this real estate and instead transferred to a private party for private profit. That was not the intent of the deed. That was not the intent of the transfer to the city. And we would hope that that intent and spirit would continue on and that you would fail to allow this to happen. Please vote against this. Please keep the public involved in that real estate. Please don't let it turn into a privately-held student housing area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Who do we have next? Mr. Lucas, do we still have folks on Zoom?
We do, yes.
Yeah, please go ahead.
First on Zoom, we have Norris Chumley.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, please confirm your name for the record, and then you'll have three minutes.
My name is Dr. Norris Jude Chumley. I am representing the Buskirk family. My great-great-great-grandfather, Philip Kearney Buskirk, signed this deed along with the Hills and the Waldrons. And I just will say briefly that the Buskirk family, also the Chumley family, is in full agreement with the Hills and the Waldrons. The spirit of the donation of our ancestors to the city of Bloomington was for public use. And it is shocking, unnerving, and deeply upsetting to me personally, as a Buskirk and a Chumley, that it would be sold to a private capitalist for yet more student housing. Where are the feasibility studies? Where is the due diligence? Do you really need more student housing? Do you need more condos? Do you need more hotels? To me, it seems like you have enough. And trying to make money from this at the expense of the public is very wrong. So the Buskirk family would like to request that you vote no and make sure that the sale of this building is never carried out. I also have written a letter, and I sent an email, and I've had discussions with more than one council member and also Mayor Hamilton. And we really appreciate all of the service and great work that you've done. We also realize the importance of the police and fire department, and they should be in excellent facilities. It's very important, but not at the expense of the public. Anyway, I thank you. Please vote no. We appreciate your help.
Thank you, Mr. Chumley. Let's go here in chambers.
Jeff Rogers, FOP Vice President, Member of Bloomington Police Department Representative. Specifically, thank you, Councilmember Rosenbarger, Councilmember Piedmont Smith, Councilmember Scamorelli, for bringing up the specifics about the, the cost and the fiscal nature of this, asking for specific numbers. You are the fiscal responsibility in this city. So simply put, the numbers look good. I, I wouldn't take, I can't take either. Whenever you're talking about the two tables that were put up, and the numbers are shown to be $67,000 to $68,000 difference between the estimates and the actual projects, that's not taking into account what Councilmember Piedmont Smith stated as far as the amount that's the Realtor fees. It's also not taking into account, you know, 18 to 24 months, that we are going to be paying a lease. That's $630,000 at 18 months and $840,000 at 24 months. Where does that money come from? Where does that funding come from? Is that coming out of the police department's budget? I mean, if we're going to be 20 officers short, we do have enough money to pay for it. But we don't know the full cost of this project yet. We have always been told, the FOP has always been told, there will be two construction bids for this. We were always told that the radio tower would be on the second, the relocation would be on the second. So if it's on the first, great. $12.7 million is the lowest bid. I think the, the highest bid was $5 million higher than that. So that's, I don't know which bid the RDC is going to take, but I know it hasn't been determined yet. It just seems a little, again, going quickly to sell this building before you know what the full cost of the replacement is going to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lucas, let's go with our next person on Zoom.
Next on Zoom, we have Jamie.
Welcome. If you would, please confirm your full name for the record, and then you'll have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Jamie Scholl. I won't need my full three minutes. I'm just going to make this very brief. I want to express gratitude to all the families that have donated land for the public good. As a longtime citizen of Bloomington, I'm appalled that this issue has come this far to a sale. I would like for the property to remain in the public good in whatever way that may be. The precedent of selling something that families have so graciously donated would set a precedent that might deter others from considering donating land in the future. I think this should be also considered. Please vote no on this and keep this land for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scholl. Let's come here in chambers next. When you're ready, if you would share your full name for the record, and then you'll have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Thomas Westgard. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I have a, just a few thoughts. The first is that trust is absolutely essential to a government working. You can't pass an ordinance without extending some sort of trust to someone, delegating authority to someone to enforce something wisely and in good faith. I think a lot of people have already talked about the same basic concept. It's one thing to go against the clear intention of these specific donors, but look to the future and think about the trust that you're expecting from other people to have in you and that you expect to extend to other people at the time that you delegate authority. The, the thing you're doing right now is in clear violation of that deed, and there's questionable legality. It's, it's clearly immoral. But the, the practicality of undermining the trust that the public has in you and future donors is a really terrible precedent to put forward to the world. So, look, people tell me I'm far too cynical about government, but even considering this is a threat, so that the next time you're in a negotiation to get a gift, they're going to be looking across the table at you and saying, well, I remember that hearing when you clearly undermined the restriction in the gift. Why would I trust you now not to do the same thing to me? And when you turn to people in city government and say, I want to, I want you to be trustworthy and wise in how you execute the powers that we grant to you, why wouldn't they look back at this and say, well, hey, for $4.4 million, that's what your integrity's worth? Why not? How is that argument false? That, the second big point I want to make is, this is the same legal department that told you they were going to take Juan Carrasco's property, and I think we all know how that ended. There is nothing in that budget for litigation costs. There are 14 original signers in that deed. The heir of any single one of them can institute litigation. Now, you've got a lot of family members telling you that they're all aligned. They can all come up with money, and it only takes one person to go ahead and file that lawsuit. Why are you doing this? You don't have a title insurance commitment. It can be put on there as an exemption. Larry Allen said, it doesn't look like that's the intent of the, of the parties. Go in front of a judge and say what it looked like, and the other side is holding up a deed. Come on. This isn't a legal argument. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Westgard. Additional comments here in chambers? Once you've signed in, please share your name for the record, and then you'll have three minutes.
Evening, Councilmembers. Paul Post, President, FOP Lodge 88. We have been very much opposed to the idea of selling this property just to fund something at Showers West, which we ultimately oppose. Just a couple of thoughts. A lot has been said tonight, and I'm not going to rehash it. Jeff brought up a bunch of the numbers. We really appreciate you digging into those numbers tonight. This is yet again another situation where several projects have been tied together, and it seems like, you know, the, the thing that we heard tonight is, if we don't do this now, the fire projects can't move forward. Yet again, a fire project's, you know, being, being kind of put out there as being held hostage to something. The FOP is not in favor of that at all. We believe Station 3 especially needs a lot of time and attention. I've spoken with President Canada about their needs there, and we fully support that project as well as their training center project. So don't, don't let that be held hostage as part of this in the thinking here. The other part was brought up by Councilmember Smith. I really appreciate him saying it. This should have been brought up a year ago. This should have been told to you a year ago, even if it was something that they believed they were right on, which they've said tonight they believe they are right. It doesn't matter. They still should have told them, told you, told us, told the public, everyone, right? When I was a kid, my mom taught me something about lying. She said, a lie of omission is still a lie. Don't leave things out. Don't leave out important things, right? That was a very important thing that should have been in front of you during the discussion in January when this all started. This all could have been headed off a long time ago. Again, we oppose this. We hope that you'll vote no on it, and thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Mr. Westgard. Mr. Lucas, do we have anyone else on Zoom?
Yes, next is Carrie Thompson.
Welcome, Ms. Thompson. If you would, please confirm your name for the record, and then you'll have three minutes.
Good evening. This is Carrie Thompson. I've listened tonight to the presentation and questions, and it's clear to me that there are many outstanding issues with this property that we still have yet to determine. If this property attracted three qualifying, qualified bids in such a short period of time, it can, again, attract qualified bids in the future should we choose to sell. Such a delay allows us time to ensure we are financially and ethically headed in a direction to protect our city's best interests, and in fact, would serve to reduce the rent eventually paid for a leaseback, a rate that if viewed as interest on the total sale price would be in excess of 9%. Certainly, the city can bond for a lower interest rate than that. Declining these offers does not preclude us from selling this property in the future, but it does allow the city time to complete due diligence on the sale, the cost of Showers West, and also time to discuss with the Buskirk and Hill families regarding the possibility of what types of future uses would be within the gift's intent. It does not seem prudent to rush into a deal tonight, one that may not close until my administration is in place, but one which would absolutely be bound by. Thank you for your careful consideration of the questions which remain outstanding.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Mr. Lucas, do we have anyone else on Zoom?
I received two written comments, which I believe I can read fairly quickly. The first is from Ellen Chumley, who says, "I feel the call to sell the police station is an egregious disregard of the generosity and interests of the families that have donated land for the Waldron Hill and Buskirk Park. This land was given to the city of Bloomington with the stipulation that it remain a park in perpetuity, and if any exceptions existed in terms of the park's usage, like the police station, once that usage was no longer occurring, the land in question would revert back to the park. Your efforts to sell this land breaches the original agreement with the donating families, and I believe therefore would not be a legal sale. Please find another way to fund the new police station and honor the original agreement made with the Hill, Waldron, and Buskirk families." And the next comment is from Jane, who says, "I have a question I'd like considered by this administration and next regarding this project. Has the trades garage absorption of parking spaces by police been accounted for in regard to future development of this area specifically for the tech park? Why is police being prioritized over other departments and expansion in general for most all of City Hall? Finally, the news about the plans is brand-new for parking. There is currently not enough parking for staff, as is, and the city is only expanding. How will this be accounted for with a limited space and parking allowance?" I believe those are the comments on Zoom at the moment.
Thank you. And is there, are there any additional comments here in chambers? Okay, seeing none, let's come back to council for additional questions, or, well, let's just stay with questions for now. Councilmember Rollin?
I have comment, no questions.
Additional questions? Councilmember Volan? And then Councilmember Flaherty.
We get an answer on the improvements to the exterior of Showers West, how much the administration expects it will cost to fully renovate the operational needs of the police station with that parking lot.
Thank you for the question. If I'm following your question?
Well, I guess I'm asking about the, whatever the amount is, 12-point-something million.
Right.
To renovate. I assume that is the interior, maybe the facade, but does it involve, I mean, I don't know how much yet we should expect the total cost of converting the surface lot and the garage and anything else, the access points, to be operationally satisfactory. How much should that cost?
Yeah, this, this was designed as a single bid to accomplish the project. As you would imagine, for a historic building like that, there'll be extremely little exterior adjustment. Any, any significant adjustment to the exterior of the building would require historic changes. We don't intend to pursue that. The architects don't intend to pursue that. So secure doors are part of the project. As Deputy Mary Allen indicated, the gated, exception for the, the gated section for the underground parking is included, and the movement of the radio tower. Basic changes of parking is mostly striping in what we're looking at to open up the two lots that are both owned by the city to manage them as one lot. But there's, there's no major expectation of other exterior work. But there's no major expectation of other exterior work to be done.
So, whatever it is that the administration is contemplating for the exterior and the interior is all in that bid?
Yes, basically.
Okay. Second question related. I hear the term "secure" with respect to parking in the lower level of the garage. Is there a difference between secure and reserved? Are we simply reserving the spaces there, or are there security features being built in that require some hardening of that lower floor?
The basic design, thank you for the question, is to put a secure fencing or gate into the, if you go in from the south and you know that it goes down to the left, to put a physical barrier that would only be accessed by the police department.
So, there's a garage or a door?
To go into the lower section of the garage.
Like a door that would close, or just a gate that could be broken through?
Fence, gate, I'm not sure exactly what, but for vehicular access. I don't know about pedestrian access, but the plan is to put a secure entrance there.
Okay. Well, now, here is the big question, and I'm glad you're here at the podium for it. Why would this sale not be a violation, at least of the spirit of the deed? How does this sale not set a negative precedent for future gifts?
Well, thanks for asking. And first, I want to, I appreciate the extraordinary generosity of many people who spoke and many who are not here, of course, in all kinds of ways that support the community, and we appreciate that. We look forward to continuing to work with folks on that. I think, from my perspective, this gift, which was for a public park, was changed in 1960s, when it was converted from a park, some parts of it, from a park to the public office building use over 50, 60 years. We certainly, we've invested $600,000 in that park in the last three years. We love that park. We intend to keep that park as it is. I think the question from our perspective is, we have an inadequate police station there. We've looked at reforming it, fixing it, expanding it. It's not feasible. It's not a good building. It's not a good opportunity for us to do that efficiently. And so, effectively, we're swapping one publicly-owned police department for another property here that's currently privately-owned and will become publicly-owned for a police department, and shifting that other property to private use. So, we're trading one private use from public to public and trading one public use to private. They're actually roughly a similar size footprint. But, look, I, we, what we're asking for you to do is let the negotiations happen. I heard the mayor-elect say they want to do continued discussion. We support that. We would do that. It's not going to close now. We'd let her do that. It's up to you whether you want to have that discussion go forward. I think, as I said before, the, if it doesn't go forward, that issue will be raised and it'll be dealt with, and that's fine by the next council and the next administration. It will mean a pause in some of the projects, which is, has some impact, but there's also other options for funding those that could be looked at. It will, the two priority projects will continue, and we think it's prudent to move forward. We think it's, we think it's appropriate, and the park is the park. The deed was to be protected as a public park. We are not changing a square inch of a public park, but we look forward to working with folks on that and appreciate the donations.
Well, I've got two follow-ups, if I may. One is, I mean, the words "public" and "park" are both in the conversation here, and you're saying because this portion of the land was converted to some use other than a park, that therefore it should also be able to be converted from public to private?
Again, I'm not a lawyer, but I would say the conversion from anything that happened in 1963, when what maybe was used to be part of a park to become not a public park, was what affected the deed, which said this shall remain a public park. It's no longer a public park. It hasn't been for 60 years.
Well, it's public and it's a park. It's no longer a park, but it is still public.
The property that we're discussing is not a park. It's not used as a park.
Right, I agree.
And that's what the deed said it should be preserved to be back in 1923. That conversion happened in 1960-something.
So, you're saying that because we changed the park part, now the public part is also changeable?
There was no reservation for public use in the original contribution, in the original sale and deed. I guess, I know our legal counsel, corporate counsel also.
Wait, 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 hold on. Was there an actual transfer of the property that was a park to the Bloomington Municipal Building Corporation of some kind? Was there an actual transfer that converted that property to some use other than public park? Or was it just by osmosis? I mean, I don't understand. No, 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 I'm checking the question.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't, there's a complicated history of land transactions. Would you like to lay?
Was there a transaction that created this building?
Councilmember Volan, Corporation Counsel.
Hello.
Kate.
Yes.
There has been discussion of the 1923 deed. All I really want to say about this, in addition to what has already been said by Deputy Mayor Allen, who's very close to the research on this, both the original research and the ongoing discussions we've been having, is that there are, it's more complex than just a single deed. There are other documents. There were other transactions surrounding the creation of this area, and that's what we had been looking at. It's what we've continued to discuss. And again, I'm not likely to get into a lot of details about these transactions in this kind of setting when people have raised the specter of litigation, although I will say a couple of things about what has been said. First, it's true. Anyone who can afford a filing fee can file a lawsuit. That happens all the time. We are equipped to handle that kind of thing. Obviously, no one wants litigation. That's why there have been these discussions, and there will continue to be discussions with the family and families. Okay? So, that is just the normal course of business. If the threat of litigation stopped everyone in their tracks every time government or anyone wanted to do something, nothing would ever get done. Okay? And asserting something doesn't make it so. So, that is part of what I want to respond to. One other thing that was said up here earlier is the suggestion that we were somehow lying to this council, either affirmatively or by omission by not raising this earlier. I guess what I would say about that is also in the normal course of business, the legal department and other units of the city do a wide variety of research and analysis on various aspects of transactions that are going to occur, that are proposed to occur. We don't then sort of rehearse all of our findings in front of everybody that we consult or ask to do something. I understand people may disagree about whether we should have brought this forward in some way before now, but there was an analysis and a conclusion, and we said, "Yep, we think we can do this," as you heard Deputy Mayor Allen say before, "with additional information that we've been getting." I think it's strengthening our conclusion. But we are continuing in the normal way. We'd be anticipating, in the context of a sale and due diligence, continuing to go through that process and resolving if there are any other issues to go ahead and do that. So, there was no attempt to hide the ball or sort of, you know, in any way lie to this council, and I want to be abundantly clear about that.
While I thought Mr. Smith's question was a general one, I don't agree with the idea that there has been an effort to deceive.
I wasn't directing this at Councilmember Smith.
Right. But I think this question's for the mayor at this point. I want to rephrase the question I asked you a moment ago. Why would this not be a violation of the spirit of the gift, even if it is not a violation of the letter of the deed?
Well, of course, I can't speak for the, for those who are representing the original givers. I can speak to the deed and to the great generosity of many of these families to the community, which we greatly appreciate. I think, from my seat as a mayor, looking at a property that's been used for a police station or City Hall for 60 years, and that we see it's not adequate for any use like that going forward, that we, I don't view it as inconsistent with the original purpose of the gift, as it sits today, to convert that land into some other use, good use along Third Street, et cetera, et cetera, and replace it, in some ways, with part of that funding to make a much better, outstanding police headquarters. Now, I would also say if it was against the spirit of the gift to shift it from being a public park, in the 1960s would have been a good time for the donors to say, "Hey, okay, it's not a park anymore, but, okay, you can use it for a station, but you got to keep it public use," and that's just not in the record. But again, we don't, we don't want to contest, and that's their view. It's been very civil. These are wonderful people, wonderful families. We look forward to continuing to work with them. But that's my view of the, is it in the spirit of the gift? I believe it is today, as we look at the deeds and the legal description, and if, you know, if the council or future administration says, "We never want to use that for anything other than public property," that's a determination that could be made. I don't, it won't be a police station. It could be something else. It will take funds to do that. It could be converted back to a park. Our Parks Department likes having more eyes on a park, so there's a lot of value in actually creating more housing around a great urban park like that. But that's my answer to that. And again, it's up, it's up to this council, next council, next administration as they want to handle that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Flaherty?
I have no question anymore. Thank you.
Additional questions? Seeing none, is there any, is there any comment before we proceed to vote? Councilmember Rolla?
Okay, I don't like where I find myself once again. Just to go through the various points that were made. First, I want to thank the descendants of the notable families of Bloomington for coming this evening and sharing your views, and I respect the generosity of your ancestors and your families. I think it's an inadequate explanation not to inform the council if there was a deed restriction on a property anticipated to sell and anticipated that would be needed to sell in order, as a package, in order to finance the West Showers purchase, the renovation, et cetera, et cetera. I think that is going to be something that I'll be focused on in the future of making sure that any future administration is compelled to share any information like that. It may be legal to proceed, but I don't think it's ethical with this sale. I'll leave that as a short statement of something. I know we are all going to say something, so I don't want to be excessive, aim for brevity. I oppose the Showers purchase as a new headquarters for the police to begin with, for a number of reasons, and I won't go into those. But the rank and file were opposed to moving. The costs were likely to be higher than estimated, which seems to be the case, and the financing involved the sale of this existing Third Street station, which seemed to be uniquely, had utility for the police, and so would be a good idea, I think, to renovate. You know, I'm distressed right now that we find that we may encumber a shortfall without this sale for fire department facilities, but I think that it's absolutely necessary to deny this, to vote no on this resolution, deny the sale. I'm hoping that we can reevaluate in the future council, the future administration, the use of that building, because I still think that it is the best option. I think that there are massive problems involving that part of the building, and I don't think they're resolvable. I don't think the ingress or egress are resolvable. I don't think the security is resolvable, many things. So, I urge my colleagues to vote no on this, and I appreciate everyone coming tonight, people at home weighing in on this, and I will be voting no. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments? Councilmember Sandberg?
Well, this has been a painful process to struggle with in our last meeting of this year. I think if I can sum it up briefly, my opposition to the sale of Third Street and the moving of the police department to Showers West is a failure to listen. I've heard a lot of things about, "Oh, the Third Street is flooded, and it's horrible, and it's terrible, and the police don't like it." That isn't what I heard. What I heard was they would rather stay in a secure building in a location that is feasible for ingress, egress, everyone's accustomed to that, than to have to get shoehorned to a facility where they're going to be retrofitted in and where it's not going to be adequate to the needs of our police department. And we are, we hear it repeatedly, I hear it repeatedly. We're 20 down. We're losing officers. We're losing our ability to provide public safety for our community because we're not And when I listen to the police, of course, who wouldn't want a new, brand-new, state-of-the-art building? That probably would have been the first preference. But they told me, and I heard it, they would rather stay in Third Street and make renovations there. They could have moved to the west for future growth. That could have been made feasible. They would rather stay in that building than move back here. That's what I heard, and that's why I voted no. And that's why I'll be voting no tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yeah, first of all, I wanted to say that I voted, remind everybody that I voted in favor of the purchase of Showers West for the purpose of the new police station and fire administrative offices. I still think it's a good idea. I'm glad to see the project moving ahead. I think that Mayor-elect Carrie Thompson is also in favor of that move in principle, and of course she expressed some concerns about the financial details, which I've also expressed. I, you know, talked to Larry Allen last week, and I said, you know, what I need to see before I can vote on the sale of the police station is detailed, updated financials of the costs of renovating Showers West and the title insurance or title commitment to mitigate the risk, if anything, were to become of the legal, of the families contesting the sale due to the original deed. I got neither one. So, we don't have the additional title insurance, and we don't have, or at least I don't have, a detailed breakdown of everything included in the bids, and I think there are clearly things that have been excluded in the cost projections. So, I'm not comfortable voting on this. Aside from that, I do take very seriously the feedback that we've gotten from the family members, the heirs of the original donors of this land, and I feel like we need to respect the, not just the letter of the deed, but the intention behind the deed from 100 years ago. So, I think that we, you know, I can't vote yes for this tonight. I do want to move forward with Showers West. I do feel strongly that we need items 3 and 4 on the Bond Project list, the Fire Station Number 3 renovation, and the Training Center. As Councilmember Volan mentioned, I think TIF funds would be a good, good thing to look at to make those happen, but I can't support the sale of the station at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments?
I hope we're going to hear from everybody tonight.
I'm sorry?
I hope we're going to hear from every member tonight on the issue that's important.
Comments?
Looking forward to hearing other people.
They're being worked on, apparently. Councilmember Rosenberg, do you want to jump in?
I would love to. I've thought on this, some of them are new. So, here we go. I think how Councilmember Piedmont Smith started was really good. I am 100% in favor and an advocate of moving police and fire to Showers West. I think we haven't really talked about the benefits of that much at all tonight, but these things can be connected, and just based on the table with the funding and expenses, they are, they... And just based on the table with the funding and expenses, they are, they do seem to be I'm a big fan of that because I think it's really important to have as many city staff under one roof as possible. I think as we look at changing needs in our city, we might look at expanding Community and Family Resources Department. We might look at creating a Department of Public Safety or creating a Department of DEI, Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. And I think those staff are very much connected to both police and fire and the staff that we have here at City Hall. So I think that housing everyone in one building will physically make changes over the next decade or two decades or three decades easier and more seamless and help people work together in ways that are very difficult when we house staff in different buildings. I think a lot of the unknowns that are present here tonight will also be unknown in the new year, I think, for renovations. How much does it cost to renovate a huge building? Isn't going to be known until the renovation is finished. I can just tell you that about renovating a bathroom. I mean, I hear what everyone is saying, too. There's like, there's legality, there's morals, there's ethics, and it is very hard as an attorney. I think the legality of this is okay. I think that when a building, when City Hall was built on this property years ago, it changed the purpose. And like, that's when the conversation should have happened, not when there's already been two different or one building on this property. So I think that's difficult. I think also in property law, and as explained in our packet, our state law does limit how long certain property interests are valid. And that is also because we don't want people, long after they're gone, deciding what happens in a city where, you know, a lot of people live. So that is something I consider. Here's a very random comment and thought that I had, that we're scrutinizing a property very much here, of course, Washington and Third Street. Directly north of this property is an entire vacant block in downtown Bloomington. I think it's owned by the church across the street, just north of it. And this is what I'm saying, it's very random, but like, we have an entire block that anything could be done there. We could extend the park, so it could be on the other side of this building, right? We could have housing there. Right now, part of it is a parking lot, part of it is a fenced-in, grassy area that doesn't get used, I think. It could be housing for the unhoused. There are so many options. It's an entire city block in downtown Bloomington. I wish what we could do is tax property owners with vacant or abandoned land more so that we encourage homes for people when we don't have enough, right? We don't have enough affordable homes. We don't have enough homes in general for people to live. So that's just one random thought about that property. I do think having more people live downtown is a really, is a really good thing for our city. So I think, I do see it as good for the public and good for residents when we create more opportunities for people to live in a place that is incredibly walkable, pretty bikeable, and then like directly across the street from the transit center. So people living there could take one bus anywhere they're going most likely and never have to connect. And I think that is a really, that is a really big deal to me. So I think this is hard. I want to hear from everyone else. I'm just scrolling through some of my comments. I didn't do the Councilmember Ralau's brevity thing tonight. Somebody did comment that the city didn't do a feasibility study on this. But it's not the city's, it's not the city's job to do a feasibility study. That comes from the buyer. So the buyers are going to decide, is it profitable to build something here, and what is that? And three different potential buyers decided it is profitable to build housing. And that's what, that's what property owners all over Bloomington are still doing, because we don't have enough housing. And when it gets built, it gets occupied, and they're making money. So that's why it keeps happening in our city. Okay. I would like to also just go back to our land acknowledgement, is my last comment, but to say like, all of our land was stolen from indigenous people. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments? Councilmember Smith?
My colleagues, I have to make a comment now. It just violates the spirit of the donation. And that's a big issue for me. And so I really, you know, I'm not going to support this. So it violates the spirit. And the other thing is, it really doesn't need to be resolved today, and we don't really need to vote yes today. We can, we can let the next administration contemplate this and, and, you know, chat with the families and, you know, just come to some thought on it and be fair and, you know, be good citizens and take care of the people that donated this wonderful property. So, yeah, I can't see myself voting for it. So thanks to Councilmember Volin for encouraging me to speak, because I like to stay quiet. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Volin.
Councilmember Smith spoke up. Silent. Yeah, no, it's important that we all weigh in here. This is an issue of the most significant merit. We should be having debate on it. I don't doubt the families intend to litigate. You know, like, this is not a crowd that frequents the city council. The only reason that they're here is because of the question I asked about the conversion of the word "public" to "private." It's one thing to let a parkland become a building. It's another thing for it to be converted to private use and the most, let's call it notorious, private use there is. I will disagree with Dr. Chumley that we do need more student housing. We need more housing of every kind. We need more condos. We probably need more hotels. It doesn't mean that has to be built here, but apparently the mayor thinks that land is fungible. So, you know, like, we can take this land that's worth more because it can be privately developed and swap it with this other land. I mean, I just, that, it does violate the spirit of the deed. But I would also correct Dr. Chumley to say that this body is not exactly fiscally responsible. We do oversight, but we do not appropriate. We do not say, we can spend dollars here. That must come from the mayor, that must come from the administration. The mayor appropriates money. We can approve it or not. We can cut it. We can't increase it. That's always been the case, long as I've been here. But the mayor did speak at the outset of this meeting about the city's, quote, "outstanding fiscal strength." Well, I want to praise the administration and the previous administration for having done a very good job of managing the fiscal aspect of the city. Like I said, the rainy day fund has always been, like every budget hearing, I hear, well, here's the amount that the state recommends that we have in our rainy day fund, here's the amount we actually have. And it's always like, we should have 25% or 33%, and we always have 40% or 42% or 45%. And I don't know why that is. Are we being extra cautious? But we certainly, that is one, perhaps not repeatable source of money. But I'm going to come back to TIF money. This council, when it built the Seventh and Morton garages, dropped the ball after they were built. We did not pay attention to the fact that the ordinances that created them called for increases in fees to cover the increased costs of the garages, something which we blew off for more than a decade. Those were signed before I took office, was created before I took office. I wasn't aware of them, and this is a word of warning to future council members. There's a whole lot of homework you're going to need to do, or you're going to feel like you've dropped the ball. I imagine that some of the veterans here are going to be happy to answer your questions for you when you come to us. But I'm pretty sure that those bonds are up soon, if not already. What happened to the, those are being paid for, they're subsidized by TIF dollars. They have been for years. I keep seeing the $600,000 a year in TIF transfers to pay for those two garages. I heard the police talking about their parking concerns and their needs. I mean, one thing I know about them now is that they're managing a rather small parking lot for their needs, and they do so by having cars out of remote site whenever they have to. So they already know how to manage parking. Yes, it will be a convenience to have, I mean, with the expansion of square footage that they need, there's going to be a need for a certain amount more of parking. But it doesn't have to be unlimited, and we should all be careful about how we use the word "parking." We heard about staff, city staff, asking why there's not going to be any parking for them, but we're making more parking for the police. We all have a responsibility to face the fact that parking costs money, a lot of money. And we, when we say parking, we really mean free, convenient parking. And there's no such thing. It's either convenient or it's cheap or free. So pick one. Somebody's paying for it. Right now, we're paying for it because, I mean, we built a lot of parking that we're not using. And so now, at least, if the police station moves there, they're going to use some of the parking. But Eighth Street, West Eighth Street, the 400 block of West Eighth Street, one of the lowest-use blocks in the city, no demand there. Rogers Street, since the meters went in 2013, they've been free. Well, this area of the city, through public and private means, is developing. There's a greater demand for parking. Maybe it's time we reexamine this privilege that we have to have free parking for people. Maybe, that's what the whole point of parking cash-out was, was to encourage employees to find other ways to go, to charge market rates for parking, to show everyone how much parking costs. And yet, this has become a big issue in this discussion. There's money to be had in not subsidizing parking with TIF funds anymore, ever again. Setting the rates so that parking costs are covered, and then you have money to build the fire stations. So the mayor's argument for the fungibility of the property, I find difficult to accept. I don't think that it's in the spirit of the gift to convert this public property to private. And I have a real problem with doing that. I'm still listening to my colleagues, but I'm not sure how I vote for that. I also know what can be done with the building. If the Police Department moves after all, if Showers West is completed, another thing I can't help but be agnostic about, I want to ask the question, whatever happened to Rhinos, the youth center that used to be on South Walnut Street? Well, there was a deal done with, guess who, Pavilion Properties. They built Urban Station Two on it, and it was supposed to have Rhinos on the ground floor. Well, how did that get lost? We should ask Harmony about it. They certainly didn't get anything out of it. Somehow, unlike, say, with the chocolate mousse, Rhinos didn't get built on that ground floor. I'd certainly like to hear Pavilion explain why they didn't bother, I mean, I thought that was the understanding there. But maybe that was the result of somebody reading a deed or a deal a different way than the spirit was intended. So all I see is whether we build something on top of it to maximize the value of that space for public use or not, any future use of that block of Third Street, we ought to be thinking about restoring a youth center there before we think about anything else, and then building around or on top of it if it proves to be beneficial to the public. Some thoughts for people as we debate. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sims.
Thank you very much. I really wish I was there in person this evening. And I think my colleagues, knowing many of the folks in the public know, I had recent surgery on my right feet, lower, or both of my feet. About seven weeks ago on the right foot, eh, almost three on the left. So I'm sitting here listening very intently with 12 stitches in my left foot. But what I'm hearing is more painful than that. And many of the things that we've gone through in certain situations and certain pieces of legislation. I have supported the purchase of Showers West, the sale of the BPD headquarters, the renovation of the fire units, fire station units, the support of the bond so that we can complete these projects. So it becomes distressing. Actually, before I get into that, I'd like to hear from all of my colleagues as well. But I hope no one sitting on this dies, any of my colleagues feel any kind of pressure or the need to respond if you don't totally feel so. Just vote your conscience. But moving back, I supported all this. But like many of my colleagues have said, I really, truly wish I knew about this deed months ago, some of the reversion, deed reversions. I really wish I knew if there would have been a shortfall, what kind of issues we were having with the headquarters sale. It just doesn't leave you feeling good, at least from my standpoint. I'm looking for ways to continue to sort this project, and I'm finding it difficult to find them. You know, and also that I found painful, I don't know the Hill family or members of the Hill family very well. But I do know Dr. Norris Chumley. Known him for several years now. Love to talk with him. He's been a great friend to Second Baptist Church and many of my fellow congregants are pastor. And just to hear him and his family speak so passionately on at least their thoughts, their position on the use of this property, it's compelling to me. We can move forward, we can go in and sell it. At some point, it's not worth it to me to say, "Let's just do it and see what the courts decide. Let's just do it and see if they're going to, you know, litigate. Let's just do it." Well, you know, if we had it to go all over again, I think many of us would take different tacks in order to get to a more amicable, more, a better solution than where we are. This is tough. Again, I want to hear from my colleagues as well. Not that it would help be decided at all. It's interesting, and I do appreciate the support. But there's just so many things. I mean, we've heard from the police union, the fire union, many of the people that we're hearing from, we've been hearing from for months. So not a lot of this is new to me. But some of the things that are new are some of the things that, it's just a hump, it's hard to get over. And I hope there's not a limit on comments this evening. Probably be the last one that I'll have in many years on this council. But it, there's a lot of things that's going on. I feel bad for Griffin Realty, for the efforts, and none of the other things, but, but, but for the effort and the work that's being put into, to what they're doing. You know, back in the day, my wife, when she first started working for the city, her office was down in that building when it was City Hall. I mean, so many of us have long-term connections there. And I have to admit, even back then, over the years, interning with BPD, back in some of the times when I'd go there for ride-alongs, I never, ever thought about a deed reversion. I never thought about that. But then now it comes to forefront, it's really hard for me to look the other way. So I'm also very, very encouraged to hear from Mayor-elect Thompson on that, and also hearing from some of my colleagues that she sees the benefits or thinks that she sees the benefits of Showers West and some of the complex for the public safety that I've seen in the past. But there is the value, I think, of maybe hitting pause a little bit, as long as we proceed along there and find a more amicable way, not only for financing, but from a community standpoint, to, you know, just kind of change the direction of where we've been going the last couple of years. So I won't use this to get into a diatribe of cultural and racial equity, or parking, or zoning, or, you know, we'll try to stay focused on what it is we're doing here today. And I hope the public understands this is very, this is, this is difficult for me, as I think it is for some of my colleagues. So I'll pass it on. It's starting to get late, and I know many of us have great thoughts about this, but I appreciate. to get late, and I know many of us have great thoughts about this. But I appreciate the opportunity to speak, and thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilmember Sims. Councilmember Flaherty?
Thank you. Appreciate all my colleagues have had to say, and what we've heard from the public tonight, and others who emailed us. Likewise, I find myself having lots of mixed feelings. I think, zooming out a bit, I think it's essential that we have a police that are headquartered at the same place as the rest of civil city staff, same for fire. I think the needed evolution of our public safety and policing systems are what drive that. I think we have to continue to rethink how we've done things, because the way we've always done things are broken, demonstrably so, in just literally the data of all elements of our carceral and policing system. So we have to look for new ways and new paths forward. I think that was the, for me, a major motivation in voting in favor of the bonds and appropriations for the purchase and renovation of the showers west. That's moving forward. I look forward to working with the new council and with mayor, incoming Mayor Thompson, to continue to advance that project, because it's, in my view, essential for the next 50-plus years of city government. It's true, we all anticipated, when we were voting on those things, and when a majority of council members supported that proposal over the last one to two years, we anticipated a portion of the funding, financing for these projects, showers, but also several other public safety projects, would come from a sale of the current police headquarters, because it would no longer be needed. With respect to the deed, this has been very interesting. I very much appreciate hearing from various community members whose ancestors were among those who made that donation. When I, when I, sorry for the diversion. When I taught Law &amp; Public Affairs briefly at SPIA, I taught a lot of city cases, actual, like, issues in city government, both Bloomington had, and also around the state, to teach state constitutional issues. This is like a good property law issue, you know, to dig into the complexity and challenges when you've got multiple interests. I hear, on the one hand, you know, that folks are speaking on behalf of their heirs and ancestor, or on behalf of their co-heirs and on behalf of their ancestors, and about what the spirit and intent are. But that's not, that's not how the law works, actually. I mean, it's, it's what was written in the deed, which is a free public park. And that was violated 60 years ago by city government, when it chose not to use, use that land for a free public park anymore. So to the extent that that reversion interest is valid, and I also don't think it is, based on the legal advice of our council and corporate council, even if it was, we had sort of a consensus from the folks who spoke tonight about what the spirit and intent might have been of their ancestors 100 years ago, but we don't actually know that. What we know is that they set a free public park. They might say, level the Third Street Police Station and make it a park again. That would be going with the intent, the clear written intent. Maybe it's what we should do. And I mean it. Maybe we should actually level that building and turn it back into a park. If that's how deeply committed we are to following the original intent, regardless of its legality, or regardless of the legal validity of the reversion interest. That's not to say I don't value the perspectives and positions of the folks who heard from tonight, and who are the heirs of the folks who donated the land. I think that's important. I think it's important to have this conversation. But I just want to speak to some of those tensions, and kind of like the shifts in thinking from what was, was written, and what's legally required, to what folks want to say on behalf of someone now. I'm not especially concerned about our ability to find other funding sources to meet the other public safety needs that are identified. I think there are options there. We have built healthy reserves. We have, you know, other, other tools we can, we can look to. Some of those have been spoken to tonight. So that doesn't give me excessive pause in delaying action on what to do with the Third Street property, including, I'm serious, about maybe needing to demolish and make it, making it back into a park. So I think these are questions we're going to continue to grapple with in the coming term. Be very much happy to talk to any of the folks who spoke tonight, some of whom have emailed us, and I emailed back, and asking, asking further questions for their input and insights. But yeah, based on what I've heard, I don't think it's the right decision for us to move forward with authorizing sale at this time. Thanks.
Thank you. Any additional comments? First round? So, if not, I'll finish up. So I've said before, this is a complicated, interconnected, intertwined set of activities and projects. And it's made infinitely more complex, because it's spanning two mayoral administrations and two very different councils. And so I, I feel an even the higher threshold, or a higher obligation, to make sure the numbers are right, and to make sure the ethics are right. And I don't think we're there yet. I want to acknowledge the packet of information that we were sent at 2:00 this afternoon. Thank you for that. I personally feel the need to have more time to digest it and spend with it. And I want the new council to have that opportunity as well. I think the same is true, and I appreciate the conversations I've had with various family members. Thank you for taking that time. But I think we have questions in that arena too. So for, given our responsibility as council, given the fiscal obligations we have, there are just too many questions for me to support this motion. I understand that this project is moving at a pace and a speed that is perfectly acceptable to the administration. I would respectfully disagree. And so I won't be supporting this this evening. So. Any other comments? Councilmember Volin?
Yeah, I want to say some good things here about the administration. They were good early on, in the first eight years of, about funding capital replacement. Cars and trucks, fleets finally got replaced. We had been wasting away on the vine for years. So I want to praise Mayor Hamilton now for rehabilitating our capital assets. I think this project here, at the end of his administration, is typical of its ambitiousness when it comes to the use and the development of the city's capital assets. But lately, what I've seen is that the administration's preferred sources of revenue lately have been perhaps what they saw as low-hanging fruit, the least objectionable sources of funding, creed money, selling a building. It's easy to do those things than to raise taxes, or use limited existing tax funds. You know, then I started asking the question, and I asked my colleague here, and I asked Mr. Lucas, wait a minute, how much did they ask for last year? They asked for 30 million. Why didn't they ask for 40? Why didn't they ask for 35? Well, you know, we did reject an ED Lit that the mayor asked for more, I think because he was thinking about these things. We cut it down to about 70% of what he asked for. Well, this is the price we pay. Now, granted, he didn't necessarily have to go looking for these assets to, to do it. You know, at this point, it would be less expensive to upgrade the existing police station and use the savings to fully fund the fire station with the amount of money that he asked for, that he was limited to, because we didn't make a bigger tax before. So I think, you know, even now, it's hard for me, after 20 years, to remember all the different buckets of taxes that we have access to. So I don't want to completely pile on the mayor here. He did ask for more money a couple of years ago, and we turned him down. I don't like the fact that he's asking to sell this asset, or to use creed money. I've said, I've talked about those things before. But that's sort of, I think we all have some role in how this went down. I don't ever want an administration to ask to sell a building that was given as a public gift again. And so I can't vote for this either. But I also think that, you know, the next council, the next administration, let this be a lesson to everybody who comes after us, that these details matter. And council needs a little bit more information than it gets in advance, in order to make a better decision. And council also needs to not react negatively the moment somebody says, well, we want to bring a tax. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sims? Councilmember Sims, you're muted.
I'm sorry.
Councilmember Sims, I see a hand up. Is that a hand from last time?
Oh, that was from last time. Sorry. Thank you.
Sorry. Okay. Any additional comments? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, if you would, please call the roll on Resolution 2323.
No.
Flaherty?
No.
Rosenbarger?
No.
Sims?
No.
Piedmont Smith?
No.
No.
Rallo?
No.
Sandberg?
No.
Smith?
No.
Thank you, and that motion fails 09. Okay. That takes us to legislation for first readings. As this is the last meeting of the year, we have no, no legislation for first reading. So that brings us to our second of two periods of additional public comment. Again, this is for items not on our legislative agenda. Are there, could I have a show of hands here in chambers for those who would like to offer comment? Mr. Lucas, can you please extend our invitation on Zoom?
Yes, if there are members in the public who wish to speak, please use the raise hand feature to let us know, or send a chat to the meeting host. We will recognize you that way. I see one hand raised at the moment.
Thank you. Let's begin here in chambers. Welcome. If you would, please confirm your name for the record, and then you'll have five minutes.
Good evening, Council. I'm Post FOP 88. This being the final scheduled meeting with this council, I wanted to extend my thanks on behalf of my membership to the outgoing members. Thank you for your time, your listening, your engaging with us over the past few years. We greatly appreciate that. And to the remaining council members and incoming council members, we look forward to working with you as well, going forward on these projects, as well as other ones. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Post. Mr. Lucas, do we have anyone on Zoom?
We have Jen.
Welcome, Jen. If you would, please share your full name for the record, and then you'll have five minutes.
Yes. Okay. Good evening, Council. My name is Jennifer Crossley. Many of you know me in different aspects, but tonight I will speak on behalf, or in my capacity as Monroe County Council, District Four. I just wanted to extend a sincere gratitude for the outgoing council members, to Councilmember Sims, Madam President Scambalory, Councilmember Smith, Sandberg, as well as Volin. I really appreciate your thoughtfulness and due diligence, and how you have proceeded with things during your tenure on the council. I've learned a lot from you all as well, and you will be missed. And I would also just like to say that for the remaining ones that are on the council, I still look forward to working with you in 2024, as well as the incoming administration as well. So I hope that everyone has a happy holidays. Again, deep gratitude for all of you, and what a rousing meeting this was this evening, and I just appreciate that. And have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Crossley. Are there additional commenters on Zoom? Okay, and I'm not seeing any additional commenters here in chambers. Is that correct? Okay. Seeing none, that'll close our second of two periods of public comment. So let's take up matters of council schedule. Mr. Lucas?
Yes, I will be brief. Just a reminder, for those serving on the council sidewalk committee, there will be a scheduled meeting next Tuesday, December 19th, at 1:30 PM in the Hooker Conference Room, to take up the work of 2024 funding recommendations for that funding. And I'm sure everyone here is aware that this is the last scheduled council meeting of the year. The organizational meeting scheduled for next year will be on January 10th, so we look forward to that. And before we move into some of the other recognitions, for my part, let me just say it's been a privilege to serve this council. I truly admire the dedication to public service I've seen from, from all of you, and appreciate the work that each of you have done, as well as Mayor Hamilton, on behalf of the city. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lucas. So, we now have an opportunity. This is our last meeting of the year, and the last meeting of a term. So it's an opportunity for some recognition. I confess, I have not led this kind of section of a meeting before. So where shall we begin? Is there anyone who would like to begin this evening? Councilmember Rallo?
Yes. May I begin with an encomium for Councilmember Ron Smith? Whereas the council wishes to thank Councilmember Ron Smith for his four years of service to the city and to the common council as representative of District Three. And whereas, on both the common council and as the council's representative to the Plan Commission, Councilmember Smith has diligently served in roles often tasked with making difficult choices regarding contentious issues, but did so with an amiable and considerate approach appreciated by all. And whereas, as Chair of the Council Sidewalk Committee, Councilmember Smith oversaw the most substantial update to that group's process and methodology in its history, all in an effort to make the allocation of scarce resources more effective and equitable for Bloomington residents. And whereas, Councilmember Smith listened to constituents and factored their views into his decision-making, showing respect and care for how decisions would impact Bloomington residents. And now for, be it hereby said by the common council of the city of Bloomington, Monroe County, Indiana, that we honor Ron Smith, who served as representative on the Bloomington Common Council, and who worked to make Bloomington a better place. Period.
Thank you. And would you like to, would you like to move adoption for that?
Should we adopt them one at a time?
Yes.
Yes, I would like to make the motion to adopt this encomium.
Thank you. And is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Councilmember Smith, thank you for all that you have done. So.
Thank you, all.
Did you wish to comment, or offer, share?
I just think it was really nice to say all those things, and I appreciate it very much.
I'll give you the perjury motion.
Okay.
Good. So, all those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry.
Do we have to vote?
Yes, we need, we need to do, we need to do a voice vote in favor of this encomium.
Should we all have a second? Should we read them all, and then do them?
That would be fine.
Yeah.
Are there any objections to reading all five, and then voting all at once?
Do it.
Good. All right. Who's next?
I'll go.
Councilmember Rosenbarger?
I have an encomium for Stephen Volin. Whereas, the council wishes to thank Councilmember Stephen Volin for 20 years of service to the city and to the common council as representative of District Six. And whereas, during his tenure, Councilmember Volin served at various times as council president, vice president, and parliamentarian, served on numerous council committees, and represented the council on several boards and commissions across the city, including his brainchild, the Parking Commission, bringing a depth of knowledge and forward-thinking perspective to each of these roles. And whereas, though unverified, it is likely that Councilmember Volin has the distinction of being the only council member to participate in a council meeting dressed as a chicken, showcasing the humorous and whimsical approach one must sometimes bring to public service, in that case, an ordinance allowing chickens in the city. And whereas, Councilmember Volin's legacy includes his advocacy and support for public transit, his studious emphasis on parking policies and their impacts on city government and the community, his attention to improving and prioritizing accessibility for all, and his tenacious efforts to improve the council's own approach to its work. Now, therefore, be it hereby said by the council, the common council of the city of Bloomington, Monroe County, Indiana, that we honor Stephen Volin, who served as representative of the Bloomington Common Council, and who worked to make Bloomington a better place.
Thank you. We'll accept that as a motion to adopt. Is there a second?
Second.
Great. Thank you. Who's next? Councilmember Flaherty?
Thank you. I have here an encomium for Jim Sims. Whereas, the council wishes to thank Councilmember Jim Sims for his six and a half years of service to the city and to the common council as an at-large representative. And whereas, Councilmember Sims was selected to serve as president and vice president during the height of the COVID-19 pandemic, and his even keeled approach to conducting business during those difficult times was critical to steering the council forward and helping the community recover. And whereas, Councilmember Sims served as the council's representative on the city's utility service board, bringing common sense and reasonableness to the important work of that board, in addition to the common council. And whereas, Councilmember Sims served as the first black president of the council, and through both his actions and And now therefore, be it hereby said by the common council of the city of Bloomington, Monroe County, Indiana, that we honor Jim Sims, who served as representative on the Bloomington Common Council and who worked to make Bloomington a better place.
Thank you. We'll accept that as a motion to adopt. Is there a second?
Second.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Who is next? Councilmember Rallo?
Yes, may I introduce the encomium for Susan Sandberg. Whereas the council wishes to thank Councilmember Susan Sandberg for her 17 years of service to the city and to the common council as an at-large representative. And whereas, Councilmember Sandberg has served as council parliamentarian, vice president, and during five separate occasions as council president, including serving as president during her second year on the council, demonstrating the council's faith in her steady-handedness and fair approach to leadership. And whereas, Councilmember Sandberg also served on the council's Jack Hopkins Social Services Committee during her entire tenure on the council, frequently leading that process, reflecting her deep commitment to the needs of our community's most vulnerable residents. Her efforts in support for those agencies that serve Bloomington residents will long be enjoyed by our community. And whereas, Councilmember Sandberg's emphasis on housing, public safety, livability, and essential city services has served her constituents well. And whereas, Councilmember Sandberg's advocacy for reproductive rights, workers' rights, marriage equality, and access to health care are but a few examples of her efforts to fight for a better living conditions for all. Now be it resolved, we honor Susan Sandberg, who served as representative on the Bloomington Common Council and who worked to make Bloomington a better place.
Thank you. We'll accept that as a motion to adopt. Is there a second?
Second.
Great. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, I'm pleased to read this encomium for Sue Scambalory. Whereas the council wishes to thank Councilmember Sue Scambalory for her four years of service to the city and to the common council as a representative of District 2. And whereas, the council's current, current president, whereas, as the council's current president and former vice president, Councilmember Scambalory demonstrated a preparedness and consideration for others that always reflected well upon the council and its leadership. And whereas, always seeking to unite rather than divide, Councilmember Scambalory was a driving force in trying to find common ground among council members between different levels of government and between different organizations. And whereas, Councilmember Scambalory asked thoughtful questions, approached issues with a sense of practicality and a focus on real results, and always acted with the utmost concern for doing the right thing. Now therefore, be it hereby resolved by the common council of the city of Bloomington, Monroe County, Indiana, that we honor Sue Scambalory, who served as representative on the Bloomington Common Council and who worked to make Bloomington a better place. And I also would like to take this opportunity to present our outgoing president with this honorary gavel that has been engraved with her name.
It has. It barely fits my whole last name. Thank you.
And I wanted to express that it's been an honor to serve as vice president alongside Councilmember Scambalory. So, but as for the encomium?
I so move. There's a second?
Second.
Thank you. So would any of our departing council members like to offer remarks? Or would any of our, Councilmember Volin?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank people who I've served with in council who no longer served the city. Among them are recently departed Abby Knipstein, Becky Pustani, Stacy Jane Rhodes, especially Dan Sherman, who served during most of my tenure. I want to thank Chris Sterbaum, Dorothy Granger, Andy Ruff, Allison Chopra, Tim Mayer, Darrell Neer, Marty Speckler, Brad Whistler, Mike Satterfield, Jason Bannock, David Sebag, Chris Gahl, and maybe even Mike DeKoff for their service to the city. They served to the best of their abilities. They all know how heavy the burden is that we've carried. I could acknowledge presently-serving personnel and electeds. I just want to acknowledge two people. Number one is, I served as president the majority of the time during the pandemic. Only Councilmember Sims knows what it's like to serve as president entirely during the pandemic, and I wanted to honor his service of that specific thing. I also wanted to acknowledge the one person who's been the only constant through my 20 years of service, which is my colleague Dave Rallo. I want to thank him for his service and his collegiality. I know that he and the rest of the council are coming back, are going to be, this council will be in no less capable hands come 2024 than it has been, and I'm looking forward to seeing how they do. I thank you for the time for extended remarks.
Thank you. Additional remarks? Councilmember Rallo?
Just to add, I think a tremendous advantage of working in a deliberative body is that it expands one's views and ideas and it challenges you. And I think, I know that I'll miss all of your unique and knowledgeable perspectives. And I'm happy to say that we've become fast friends despite all of our differences at times. And sincerely, I'll miss you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sims, I see your hand.
Thank you, thank you. And the first thing I do really want to say is, I've enjoyed this ride, but what I want to do is challenge the new council and the new administration to get to the point where there's no more divisiveness per se, or what can be described as a divided council and administration. I'm looking forward to the day to seeing that things were, or getting back to like when I was first on the council. It was just much more pleasant and seemed like more cordial. Not that we dislike anyone, we're just pretty opinionated, but I still think that's my hope for this council. But also, I've learned so much and learned to respect so many of you all. I remember we did the, the resolution that was against white supremacy, and I had the pleasure of working with Councilmember Flaherty and Councilmember Rosenbarger and community activists, Ms. Amy Yang, Ms. Amy Ang, in order to do that. That's when we came together, and that was important to me. It was important for our council, it was important for this city. As many of you all know, I was caucused in. I received a note from a constituent, basically, I guess, wasn't very happy or wasn't very favorable to me being caucused in because I wasn't voted in by the people. And I noticed that, he said that about me, but he never mentioned it about one of my more esteemed colleagues who was caucused in many, many years ago as well, and served very, very distinctly. But those are the type of things where you take the high road and you just let all the other stuff go. I'm very thankful to Tim Mayer. I miss Tim and Sue. And it was Tim who retired when I did what I could to secure his seat. This is an at-large seat, and as many of you all know, that you're voted in by the entire precinct committee chairs in our voting arena. There was eight of us, and many of the names I won't get into, but many of the names that you all know, and many of them have been elected and serve in other bodies. So again, something I was very, very proud of, a little bit unexpected, well, I can't say that, I kind of always expect to win, but I didn't know how it would turn out. And many of us have been friends, and we serve in other service-oriented clubs and equity-based organizations. Dan Sherman was great when I first came in, kind of taught me the ropes with his own style on how to, how to be a city councilperson, at least in meetings. Now that lasted good, gave me a good start, but I am so in debt to Stephen Lucas. As Councilmember Volin said, being an officer during the pandemic years, there is, we could not have done it without Stephen Lucas, his legal advice and just his personal support. Because it, ask any person that's served as a president on this council and the importance of trying to control or to schedule an agenda and to keep everybody happy. If you think that's easy, then I guess you just haven't lived long enough. But I don't want to take the rest of the night. I could take a long time to thank as many people that it's taken to be supportive of this community. I did it because I really, truly care. My wife and I really care about this community, and we're not going away. We're still going to work in other facets of the community. It just won't be every Wednesday night debating and doing amendments and getting phone calls in support of these and how do you think, and I will miss it, but I'll look forward to working in other areas. So then lastly, my colleagues, I'm looking up on the dais, I have so much respect for you all. Isabel, we've been together since back in the days in Indiana University in the Professional Staff Council, if you remember those days. Isabel was president once, and this is probably back in early 90s, and asked me to lead her diversity committee. This is back in the 90s, before it was fashionable, to kind of look into some of the things that we could do with this council, maybe a little bit of her, ahead of her time at that time. But not only is she a good legislator, she's a great service, community service person. I love looking up on our Monroe County NAACP meetings, executive committee meetings, seeing her face, seeing her input. Learned a lot with Dave Rallo in some of our discussions. Really wish I had more time and put more effort in some other things, but I'm very, very happy and have built a deep friendship that I will always acknowledge you in the middle of the farmer's market, or even when Kirkwood is closed, I'll still be smiling and say howdy, and hopefully we'll have good memories. Thank you, guys, so much appreciated. I'll shut up now.
Thank you, Councilmember Sims. Councilmember Sandberg?
Well, thank you. It has certainly been my privilege to serve the city of Bloomington. I want to especially thank constituents and all the individuals who strive to make this a good, livable, economically strong place to live, those of you in the nonprofit sector who I've worked with very closely over the years, and the business community, the academic community, everything that makes Bloomington a city that certainly has advantages. And I very much look forward to my full retirement and sailing off into the sunset. Thank you all.
Thank you. Additional comments? If not, I'll finish up. I would just add my thanks as well. It is very often a pleasure and always a privilege to do this work, and I especially appreciate in my time in leadership, working with Stephen Lucas and Deputy Attorney Ash Kulak, you made it look easy. Thank you for that. And those of us on the inside know it's not, and you made it look easy, so thank you for that. I especially want to acknowledge my colleagues, certainly on this dais, but also in Monroe County and in other branches of government, who have taught me a great deal over the last four years, so thank you for that. Most of all, I want to acknowledge residents. I want to acknowledge people like Deb Hutton and Sharon Yarber in Matlock Heights, who spent countless hours working on that neighborhood, and Tracy B. in Maple Heights, and Corey Rutz and Ralph Shaw in Blue Ridge, and Cindy York in Ridgefield, and so many others who spend countless hours for the betterment of their neighborhoods and for the betterment of their neighborhoods. And so it is very much a privilege to work with you. We have heard lots of challenges to the new council and challenges to the new administration. I would offer a challenge to residents, too. Stay involved, seek out opportunities to get involved if you're not currently. Use us as resources, use your council members as resources, and hold your council members accountable for being of service to you. So again, it has been a privilege, and I'm grateful for this opportunity. Is there anything else for the good of the order?
I think we need to vote on the five encomium.
We do, we do. So, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll? I assume there's no debate?
Let's all abstain.
So, let's all abstain. Okay. Madam Clerk, if you would, please call the roll on the five encomium, encomium.
Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Councilmember Sims?
Yes.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Scambalory?
Yes.
Councilmember Rallo?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
And Councilmember Volin?
Also want to say thank you to Mayor Hamilton and to Clerk Bolden. Yes.
Thank you. Is there any other business this evening? That's a wrap. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.